Hi Renee.
Hey, hey.
How are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Good.
Yourself? Good. School started today. It's a joyous day. I understand why my parents loved it so much.
Right?
Yes.
How old are your kids now?
Uh, four and seven, so preschool round two. And Shirley's in second.
Okay.
So, it's fun stuff.
It is. I don't miss it though.
Oh.
All the stress.
I know it will change, but it's...
The media is...
Yeah. Open houses.
Is that West High School?
Yep.
So I went over there a couple of weeks.
You want to be cheering?
Welcome to East Bay Township Planning Commission. On September 2nd, a glorious day because school began. And I am no longer paying childcare bills today. That being said, we'll bring the meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance if you all please join me.
Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ian, can we get a roll call, please?
Richardson.
Here.
Wasson.
President.
Ferguson.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Edley.
Here.
Walters.
President.
And Leonard.
Here. Next up on the agenda is a review for conflict of interest. Anyone have anything to declare this evening?
Yes, I'd like just to mention for purposes of information that Rod Kievel and myself serve on the zoning board of appeals together.
Thank you. And I don't think there's anything necessarily tied to the actions attainable to anything in the future, but Catherine, would you like to elaborate on that?
So, somebody serves on... And who is the person who serves on the ZVA with you?
Rod Kievel.
And what...
He's the chair of the Grand Traverse County Parks.
Okay.
Right.
No, I do not find that to be a conflict. In terms of you both serving on the ZVA, this is before the planning commission tonight.
Right, just for purposes of information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is the approval of the agenda. Anything, any adjustments? Paul, you got one for us?
Yes, I'd like to add an item to the agenda, which would be hopefully B. And this is for a correction to the bylaws regarding the order business.
Okay. And we can do that before... Okay, so we make letter B now C and we'll add a letter B to just get that point of clarity out there.
Thank you.
One just clarification, Paul, is that under 9A, it's review of bylaws and election of officers. So I think you could handle it under 9A if you want to make an amendment to the bylaws.
Yeah, we can do that. Okay. So would you like to leave it as is?
Just leave it as is.
Okay, sounds good. That being said, is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, the East Bay Township Planning Commission for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025.
For.
Thank you. We've got a motion by Carl, seconded by Rhonda, for approval of the agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is public comment. And just FYI for any newcomers, you have up to three minutes. We'll have a small indicator here at the podium so you can understand where you're at in your timing. I'll try to be polite as I know there's a lot of passion in the room this evening, but we do want to limit as many people as we can comment. So with that, because there's so many, we're going to have this ongoing battle of who's next, right? So to get rid of that, I wouldn't mind having a line start over here behind the podium once we go live and then we'll just kind of keep rolling through as comments present themselves. So with that, we'll open public comment and you'll have up to three minutes.
All right, good evening commissioners. I'd like to kick things off with a little overview, starting with who am I and why am I here? Some proposed conditions for your approval of the county park, the adverse effects of large-scale events with alcohol and amplified music, our local laws and the precedent governing this decision tonight, and then some bits on the jurisdictional significance of reasonable ordinance-backed conditions of approval. So, who am I? I'm a Rennie Lake resident. My name is Josh Schload. I'm a former Boy Scout who attended camp at Camp Grailik. I'm long on the community and I'm deeply invested in youth education. I've been active on Camp Grailik conservation issues since 2021 and I've worked and spoken with every conceivable impacted group and decision maker involved in this process so far. So, my goal is to get Camp Grailik open to the public with a plan that is compatible with surrounding uses, respects the environment, honors our local laws, and doesn't forever erase the character of the region. This is no doubting once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to preserve an incredible property and rededicate it to youth education and responsible recreation. Most of the proposed uses in the plan are great and completely on point with vision. Unfortunately, large-scale events with alcohol and amplified music are not appropriate for the park's location in the environmentally sensitive Forest Lakes and alongside the Brown Bridge Quiet Area. So proposed conditions for you to consider for your approval. I'd like to ask is, how do we get the park that everyone wants for outdoor access, responsible recreation, and youth education without turning Camp Grailik into Civic Center Southeast in the Forest Lakes? I would like to propose three reasonable conditions backed by our ordinance for you to consider for your approval that gets the park open to the public as soon as humanly possible, while not erasing all the reasons people would want to live near it or visit it in the first place. So number one, no amplified music at events, public or private. Number two, no alcohol sales or distribution at any events, public or private. Three, restrict event sizes to 50 people unless for educational purposes.
Hey Josh, could I just... I wanted to just make one quick announcement. So Josh got preapproval to do a 20-minute presentation. I know that the timer just went off for three minutes, but he is doing a 20-minute presentation on behalf of seven members of the public. So just wanted to clarify that for everyone.
Thank you for chiming in, Claire. I missed that part. Go ahead, Josh.
I'm glad we caught this.
He's a one-off.
I gotta ways to go. I want the time back on the clock.
It's running.
Okay. So to better understand where these proposals are coming from, you need to understand the adverse effects that they seek to eliminate with large-scale events. Amplified music from county park events will emanate far past the park's boundaries, across our lakes, and deep into the quiet area. Drunk drivers leaving its events and spilling out onto our already challenging roads are a clear threat to the health, safety, and general welfare of area residents. Regularly occurring large-scale events will displace precious wildlife, congest our roads, create safety issues for Scout Camp residents who will be blocked by the camp's intersection, shatter the peace of the neighboring Brown Bridge Quiet Area, and generate untold noise for surrounding residents to deal with on a regular basis. I'm far from alone in expressing these deep concerns, so I'm officially only speaking on behalf of myself, but I represent the collective interests of thousands, including Forest Lakes residents, associations, conservation groups, and the 294 individuals who signed a petition opposing large-scale events with alcohol and amplified noise at the park. Also, the 51,000 users of the Brown Bridge Quiet Area and the 87,000... I'm sorry, 87% of Traverse City voters who voted to leverage $2.3 million to expand the quiet area for what was promised to be peaceful, family-friendly recreation. And all who attended park input sessions, as was highlighted in this room, none of whom asked for large events with alcohol or amplified music. And the Brown Bridge Advisory Committee, which authored a letter to the city stating that the proposed uses would quote, "negatively and gravely impact the integrity, vision, and protection of the quiet area." And the Angels, whose $3.25 million donation helped to get the property into public hands in the first place, who are now deeply troubled to see the county proposing plans that echo the same inappropriate uses as GORC. And they all have every right to be concerned. Buzzed and drunk drivers leaving events on Hobbs will spill out onto our winding, no-shoulder, low-line-of-sight, full of wildlife bikers and hikers, already challenging roads. These drivers will feel invincible on our mostly unpleased roads well away from the city. Many of us are gate-kept by Hobbs Highway. We cannot get to town without driving by one end of Hobbs or the other. There is no way to avoid it. Our kids and grandkids are going to have to learn how to drive on these roads. Fortunately, the county has already agreed to no sales or distribution at private events, but would allow unfortunately alcohol at public events. And the adverse effects, as we'll talk about, are the same. County public partners, while vetted, are not going to be designated drivers for people making poor decisions and leaving these events. And ride shares are very tough to get where we live. And there's no financial impact either way per the county. It's all risk, no reward, so I don't understand the insistence. And I'm actually pretty sure that this is the first time citizens have asked for less alcohol and the government keeps insisting on more. At a place that's supposed to be focused on youth education. So the other primary source of concern at large events is amplified music. This is a major source of confusion, but the main venue, Besser Lodge, sits on top of a hill overlooking the lake, unbuffeted from the shoreline. Amplified music from county park events will emanate far past the park's boundaries, across the lakes, and deep into the quiet area. The science of how sound travels over water effectively amplified due to phenomenon like refraction and temperature inversion are well documented. This is backed up by the observation of anyone who's ever sat on a shoreline on a calm night and listened to the conversation in a fishing boat three-quarters of the mile across the lake. No secrets are told in fishing boats. But we took our analysis farther. We performed a sound demonstration at Rennie Lake at a property adjacent to the camp and at the same elevation as Besser Lodge. Video-recorded observations and neighbor testimony highlighted that sound would travel at least eight tenths of a mile across Rennie Lake and deep into the now adjoining quiet area. Our results were backed up by the analysis of the most qualified acoustics engineer in the state of Michigan. The county recently did their own test, observing from a canoe, and presented conflicting results, but their test methods were highly flawed. Conditions matter greatly. You can get whatever results you want based on the environmental conditions. Ambient background noise level makes all of a difference. I performed my same test in the morning when there was waves and wind and leaf flow or somebody's maybe cutting down a tree, and I got the same results they did. I got those results because there wasn't ambient background noise at that time to cancel it out. But we have more calm days and nights than we don't. More importantly, no subsequent testing or explanations can change what your ears can't deny. We got our hands on a DJ-grade system capable of pumping out tunes at 95 to 100 decibels, comparable with the level most DJs play at. We set this system up in the evening at a property very close to the camp at a similar elevation. We then played the same three-song segments and observed from four locations on the lake. It's 4,300 feet away from the sound test. So what about quiet hours? The county has agreed to comply with the same quiet hour standards as the rest of the Lakes area and end amplified music by 7:30 PM for both public and private events. 7:30 is consistent for Lakes area, but amplified music at any time of the day is a big problem for an event center next to the Brown Bridge Quiet Area on any calm day. And many want to stuff off noise concerns because of existing noise ordinances, but you cannot rely on this. East Bay Township Planning and Zoning has told me that the township ordinance is... Noise ordinance is hard to enforce. The sheriff's department isn't staffed to realistically prioritize the noise calls. It's a highly subjective standard with no specified decibel level and officers don't even have the recording equipment to measure it if they did want to enforce it. And ultimately, it's not reasonable to hold the county to the same standard as Forest Lakes residents. They're asking for something that none of us can ask for. None of us have 103 parking spaces or advertise regular recurrent large commercial events. The adverse effects of alcohol and amplified noise are compounded further by the scope, scale, and intensity of large events at the park. Large public events aren't constrained in terms of max numbers of people other than parking lot capacity and max capacity for any particular venue, with potentially hundreds of people per event in addition to whatever else is going on at the park. So this only ever gets more intense with future uses when you consider multi-venue potential, group campground rental, and gun range openings that are going to occur with future phases. So using the county's projections, this is up to 200 use days of public events, up to 80 days use days of private events. So all told, this is 280 event days and across the 365-day calendar. Not across the 365-day calendar, rather. This is a three-season park, so all of that intense activity is going to be compressed into the summer. This is tens of thousands of people potentially attending events annually. Event traffic from people leaving 200-person events will congest our roads and block the only way in and out for Scout Camp Road residents. The park is not on Hobbs, as documentation regularly says, and forms a choke point for Scout Camp Road. Irresponsible does not begin to describe. So what do our local laws and precedent say governing your decision? Fortunately, you have all of the tools necessary to prevent these predictable threats to health, safety, and wellness of our area residents. Our foundational township documents, Board of Trustees precedent, Planning Commission precedent, the historical record, and Site Planner View criteria all make it clear that these uses are inappropriate for the location. So starting with the historical record, I personally testify that there was not a booze and bangers merit badge. Contrary to often repeated but false statements, there is no historical record or grandfathering of these kinds of recurrent intense activities. Born in a letter from East Bay Township to the Rotary indicating that events had occurred in the past on occasion but were not regular or recurrent in nature, then were not permitted day use for GORC. Further established on record by prior East Bay Township Council in a memo that necessitated a PUD as the only means for the Rotary to ask for the ability to host events and backed up by signed affidavit by the former camp caretaker. So it's well-established that there's no historic precedent for this kind of intense activity. But what do our foundational township documents say? The documents upon which you need to base this decision? Our ordinance, master plan, future land use map, all say that uses like this are too intense for the very low-density, environmentally-sensitive designated natural area of preservation outside of the East Bay Growth Boundary Lakes Area District. As you will no doubt hear tonight, yes, public parks are used by right in the Lakes area, but places of public assembly, in other words, events over 50, are not. Commercial activity is also not permitted. Recent ordinance hardening made it so that you can no longer even ask special exception for these uses via a PUD in the Lakes area. This was the one and only tool that previously existed to get these kinds of exceptions. Apparently unless you're the government. This email from Claire confirms that the only option that previously existed for asking for these uses is no longer an option outside of the growth boundary and that the Rotary could not operate a GORC-type operation because the uses are so limited in the zoning district. So a used-by-right, only available to government entities, is not a blank check for unconditional use. You cannot embed disallowed uses within allowed uses. The county is effectively exploiting this used-by-right and arguing that recreation in a public park can mean just about anything they want it to mean, even when those uses are starkly at odds with the intents and purposes of our local laws and against the expressed wishes of our elected representatives. This is the same place, the same uses, the same adverse effects. The government designation does not change the intent and design of these restrictions. If the music is too loud or a drunk driver leaving one of their events kills somebody on the roads, nobody's going to care that it was the county and not the Rotary. Fundamentally, this is our contract with our local government. We are not people who moved in next to an airport and then complained about the sound of airplanes flying overhead. The county is asking to build an airport in a place we were told simply could not exist. This request also defies multiple layers of established precedent within the township broadly and at the property itself.
Special land uses, it may or may not fit in a certain location and it's up to us to kind of have this conversation. My concern right now was going from originally like four events to now 12, and I'll leave it at that at this point.
In the rural area, I just wouldn't want to see the impacts go from zero events today to maybe a dozen across the course of the entire summer.
And when you have events like this at 300, that's a lot of people. Even if you're not having amplified noise, even if we were to just have 300 people in a room and they're talking, it can get pretty loud. Now, add in things of a festive nature where you people are drinking and having a good time, that noise gets a little bit louder. If they're in a barn, that's great when it's cool weather out, but it's not air-conditioned, so all of a sudden doors are open, it gets a little bit louder. I don't think it's necessarily going to be always contained. Just think, the scale of it is something I don't think is appropriate.
For the record, prior planning commission, I could not agree more. The approval would also go against the wishes of our elected township representatives who already said no to alcohol and amplified music for GORC in September of 2022. Same property, same uses, same adverse effects. Let's listen in.
The plan is too overreaching. They're trying to reach too many venues, from a campsite to cabins, to having an event center, to trails. My understanding of what their mission is, getting people outdoors, you know, just because you have a wedding outdoors doesn't make it a natural event between the music, the alcohol, the amount of people. So I really struggle with that concept of allowing it as a wedding venue and the music.
I continue to go back to mixing the noise and the alcohol in the events. I would say that we take the amplification ability out of this. We take the alcohol out of it. And then it goes back to they're doing more of the events that were in line with what they used to do.
Requires volume level for train horn is between 96 and 110 decibels. So that's the kind of level we're talking about for music. And if I can hear a train or a siren two miles away with all the woods that's between us, I gotta believe that you're gonna hear it across them lakes and them people on those lakes are gonna hear it all the time.
I remember looking at a property that was on the lake and I said to my husband, "I'm not really sure that I want everybody to hear my conversation," you know, "because I know that that travels..."
I've been to some wild weddings and I know that, you know, all DJs aren't the same. Some of them, they like to turn up the music. Things get a little out of hand, they get wild. You add to that 200 or 300 people trying to talk over the music. I see scenarios playing out where even if we came to an agreement on what sound levels, what the limitations would be, how would that actually play out in reality?
Restricting the number of events, does it really matter if there's one or 100? If that night's the night that it's ungodly loud, you're still being disturbed. So restricting the number doesn't, to me, do much other than it doesn't happen every weekend. The idea of amplified music, wedding bar mitzvah, whatever the party is, it doesn't matter. It's still not going to be quiet and it's going to be very disruptive.
Okay, so I'm hearing amplified sound and alcohol. Is that correct? Are the two basis for not meeting that standard?
The trustees spoke with such clarity against alcohol and amplified music, the same uses that the county is proposing, but the Rotary withdrew its application 15 days later and then eventually later sold the property. Everything that I've laid out makes it clear that you cannot approve these uses based on Site Planner View standards that govern application criteria in our ordinance. E4 says that "any adverse effects on the proposed activities emanating upon adjoining residence or owners shall be minimized by appropriate screening, fencing, walls, or landscaping." Why is this unsatisfied? Well, no amount of screening, fencing, walls, or landscaping is going to stop the amplified music from emanating upon adjoining residence and the Brown Bridge Quiet Area as clearly demonstrated or save one life from a drunk driver leaving an event. E9 says that "the plan as approved is consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning to promote public health, safety, and general welfare, to encourage the use of lands in accordance with their character, to lessen congestion on public roads, to reduce hazards to life and property, to preserve property values and natural resources, to give consideration to the character of a particular area and its suitability for particular uses, and the general appropriate trend and character of land, building, and population." Why is this unsatisfied? Well, how on earth could the scope, scale, and intensity and risk of approving a plan that permits tens of thousands of people to attend hundreds of large events with alcohol and amplified music ever be consistent with any of this? F on your approval. "A site plan shall be approved if it is in compliance with the zoning ordinance the conditions impose pursuant to the ordinance, other township planning documents, and other applicable ordinances." This can't be approved. The zoning ordinance and all other township planning documents make a very clear and consistent statement about the Lakes area. These uses could not be further out of compliance for the park's location. East Bay Township also already regulates alcohol by disallowing it in all township parks. "Large events with alcohol and amplified music are not grandfathered uses. Our disallowed uses in the Lakes Area District cannot be asked for by anyone else, have been turned down by the planning commission and Board of Trustees, are not allowed in other East Bay Township parks, and can't ever satisfy Site Planner View criteria for the location." You need to ask yourselves, why are these safeguards in place and why would it be any different this time? So jurisdictional significance? Make this quick because I'm running low on time. The vast majority of the conditions that are proposed for event size alcohol and amplified noise are management practices. Those are under the purview of the Director of Parks and Rec. To his credit, John consults with Parks and Rec Commission now, but he doesn't have to. So all of these provisions are subject to the change of a stroke of a pen with very little public process involved. So it's very, very important that you conditionalize your approval on the most important conditions so the township will cannot later be undone with a stroke of a pen. So one of the questions that's coming up is, is the county already restricting some of this? Yes, the concerns have been narrowed through our ongoing efforts, but a few items that are remaining are outsized to impact, but also easy to fix. It's very important that you align public and private event conditions because the adverse effects are the exact same. So just want to review the proposed conditions again. You've got an opportunity and a duty to the residents to prevent predictable... Prevent the predictable with reasonable ordinance-backed constraints. So I ask that we responsibly rally behind how great this park can be, but we cannot allow large events with alcohol and amplified music. And you have every justification in doing so. So we ask that you consider no amplified music at any event, regardless of time of day. Spoken microphone for weddings, officiant, kids programming, that kind of stuff is fine. No alcohol sales or distribution of events, public or private. This effectively just applies the existing private event alcohol provisions to public events and limit all event types to 50 people unless educational in nature. This is consistent with the stated visions and historic uses of the park. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your time. One quick thing, I mean, we've got so many folks here, I just don't want this to turn into a cheerleading competition, which has a tendency to do with this many folks in the room, so please try to hold your best judgment in this case. Thank you, you're up.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jacqueline Andress, East Bay Township. So here we are again, three years later, all of us still recovering from post-traumatic go-rack disorder. But one thing that it's vastly and significantly different this time around is that the camp's most significant neighbor in terms of size and proximity, the City Yellin Brownbridge Quiet Area, roughly 4,560 feet of shared property line, 298 acres, that more than 87% of the city voters voted to purchase because they want more quiet area. Trail counter data projects that 51,000 visitors will cross the Browns Landing footbridge in the Quiet Area this year. So many more than just Rennie Lake neighbors stand to suffer the adverse effects of amplified music emanating from any size event or party, or from within any one of the many rentable venues on the property, especially the outdoor venues. The park's plan to allow for amplified music simply cannot allow it to satisfy site plan review criteria E4, that many adverse effects of the proposed activities emanating there from upon adjoining adjacent owners shall be minimized by appropriate screening, fencing, walls, or landscaping. No amount of screening, fencing, walls, or landscaping can minimize or prevent amplified music from emanating out into the quiet area and disturbing the enjoyment of the park users and the wildlife that occupy this space. The only realistic way to contain it is to eliminate it. To attempt to limit it to certain hours of the day is simply not fair to the park users or these poor Rennie Lake neighbors and their, and their well-being. Up to 200 days of public events, up to 80 days of private events, 200 event days projected to occur in the park. As Josh showed, based on their projections and venue capacities, this translates to a possible 37,000 people at events alone, and that doesn't include all the other stuff. 37,000 people attending events annually will devastate the character of the Forest Lakes Area.
Thank you. What was your name again?
Jacqueline Andress.
Jacqueline. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name's Dave Mangabier. I'm the President and CEO of the Grand Travers Regional Community Foundation. I'm here tonight representing both the foundation and the Grand Travers Regional Land Conservancy. Glenn Chown, my counterpart at the Conservancy, is on travel and couldn't be here tonight. The Land Conservancy and the Community Foundation are proud of the roles that they play in land conservation, protecting northern Michigan water resources, and creating sustainable recreation opportunities. Keeping with this shared vision, the Conservancy and the Community Foundation have been actively involved in facilitating the purchase of the Camp Greillick property by Grand Travers County, and through the foundation's Forever Greillick Operating Endowment, ensuring the park stewards have the resources they need to safeguard its beautiful natural environment for generations to come. Our commitment to Camp Greillick has included serving as an intermediary between the county, the property's previous owner, and private donors to ensure the property was secured as a public park and gateway to thousands of adjacent acres of public lands and water, and did not become a private development, which it most certainly would have become, that provided little or no public access, no assurances of how the property would be further developed, maintained, or the impact of uses would have had on adjacent public and private property. Our organizations are proud of our partnership with Grand Travers County to dramatically increase the size of the Forever Greillick Operating Endowment. With a major gift and matching challenge from the county and significant contributions from private donors, the endowment is growing in gifts and commitments to over a quarter, three quarters of a million dollars, with a goal of raising 1.5 million dollars. Grants from this fund will ensure the county has the resources it needs to preserve and protect literally forever the park's natural environment and recreational assets. The Conservancy and the county are working together to expand and strengthen the existing conservation easement at the park, eliminating more than 40,000 square feet. What does that mean, Dan? I've got another, a minute and a half.
Wrap her up, wrap her up, as best you can.
The county's proposed master plan for the park is to say, make an understatement, not without controversy. The Conservancy and the Community Foundation strongly encourage the county and local property owners to continue their efforts to find common ground on remaining issues including alcohol use, amplified sound, and private gatherings on the property. Let me wrap up with this.
You have 30 seconds.
While it's not our role to attempt to prescribe how these disagreements should be resolved, the Conservancy and the Community Foundation pose the question of whether these uses are consistent with the primary goals of the park, which are to promote recreational and educational programs, and provide youth and families with the opportunity to experience the mental, physical, and emotional health benefits the park has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Hi, my name is Mary Thompson. I live in beautiful East Bay Township, and you would think I would have brought my comment up. Here it is. You have an important job tonight, to apply our ordinance completely and the entire ordinance on this site plan with due care and vigorous discussion. Whether they're discussed or not, the issues are outlined for the record with this comment. Does this plan comply with our ordinance? No. Please pay special attention to the following ordinances. First, Section 3.4 stands for the notion that this body may not approve any public assembly or events as part of this plan. Public assembly is allowed in other districts, but not the Lakes Area, and as such, uses therefore are only allowed in those areas. To overcome this section, the township would have to change our ordinance. This cannot be done tonight, and so the plan as written should be denied. Second, every action, every ordinance must comply with our master plan, which states unequivocally that the rural character outside the growth boundary be preserved. How does an event venue such as the county is proposing preserve our rural character? Third, the township has decided that the nonconformity part of our ordinance does not apply here since a public park is a used by right. I noticed affidavits regarding the history of the property were submitted with the plan. Either all the history applies, or none of it does. This is what the Rotary taught us. Fourth, be mindful of how many deviations to our ordinance you allow. At some point, it will amount to spot zoning, which judges don't take kindly to. Fourth, be mindful of how. Fifth, if you allow any public assembly on this property, then the entrance is required by ordinance, Section 4.34B2, to be moved to Hobbs Highway. Despite the plan stating that there is an entrance on Hobbs, there is not, as I'm sure you all know. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mary.
My name is Barbara Winkler. I live in Spider Lake. A couple of things I want to say first off is that you received communications, you received letters from people, one such, that they were non-residents in their comments to you. And also, one of them was from someone who says he's owned property on Spring Lake for 104 years, and then he signed his name, Spring Lake, Michigan. That's northeast of Grand Haven. So I just wanted to point that out, so you didn't think that that person was our Spring Lake. I am a Spider Lake neighbor, in full support of the city's plans for Camp Greillick. I believe they've worked really hard to accommodate the concerns of the neighbors, and some of the, some of the slides that we saw were from 2022, and they have changed. They have accommodated the concerns of the neighbors. I think they're doing the right thing for the community, as well as surrounding properties, including the Brownbridge Area, Quiet Area. And when any neighbor's concerns were raised, they accommodated their concerns. They've worked really hard, and, and they've worked really hard to get this project approved. I think they're doing everything they can to accommodate everyone's concerns. I know that, I know that the park commissioner is a good person, and he's got the right heart, and, and would be the right person that I would want in charge. So that's all I have to say. I, I support the park commission.
Thank you, Barbara.
Hi, James Thompson, Scout Camp Road. I'm actually speaking on behalf of Judy Nemitz, Spider Lake. On March 25th, 2022, I sat with Commissioners Leonard, Edley, Gonzalez, and Ferguson regarding the decision to move the go-rack plan forward to the Board of Trustees. I was the only dissenting vote. Why? Because the PUD was not compliant with our ordinance. I handed out the land use matrix chart, of which 17 uses were not permitted in the Lakes Area. You were not interested in the excessive nonuses by right. That's our ordinance, not what I thought, not my opinion. The ordinance, the large group assembly, food truck catering, too many combinations of uses in one building or property are not uses permitted in the Lakes Area, to name a few. The property is also a nonconforming property of which the ordinance must be applied and be in compliance. Have you, not just Claire, thoroughly read and applied it to this plan? Have you reviewed the website plan? A wire cable with a survey pink tape and a sign hanging is not a fence for a shooting range without any berms. You don't often have a second chance to do the right thing. You're getting one to actually apply our ordinance correctly. The plan is not that different with amplified music, alcohol, wedding, large events, including sporting events, and parties not permitted in the Lakes Area District. These uses are appropriately permitted in other districts and not in the Lakes Area as our ordinance directs. Much of the Board of Trustees discussed and applied the ordinance. In my 15 years on the PC, I can recall three to four times, the BOT either sent a plan back to the PC or did not follow the PC's recommendation. The BOT did not send it back, and was clear about assembly, amplified music, and alcohol. That's why they did not send it back to the PC to revise. Do the right thing with your second chance and apply the ordinance. Don't allow amplified music, alcohol, and groups over 50 at one time. And then this last comment is mine. If you step back from all of the documents, the township was making a clear statement about the Lakes Area. No commercial activity, no large events. If the township won't allow a restaurant, an event center, even food trucks, why are you, the township, allowing the county to break these principles? Protect the Forest Lakes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good evening. Brandon Filinski, Forest Lakes Area resident. Casey Cowell could not be here with us this evening, so he asked that we share a letter, which I believe you may have received. It begins, Dear Commissioners, I'm writing to express my deepest disappointment with the current direction of the former go, Camp Greillick Scout Camp property. I was proud to help secure this land for public use, stepping in when county's negotiations with the Rotary reached an impasse, and the property was at risk of being sold into private hands. My wife and I personally gifted $3,250,000 to the Grand Travers Regional Land Conservancy to purchase and hold the property so the county could conduct 120 days of diligence before ultimately purchasing the park property from the Conservancy. That vision was rooted in a public park that would preserve the character of the Forest Lakes Area, a quiet, natural setting that supports youth programming, outdoor education, and passive recreation. A couple of years earlier, I had worked alongside local residents to stop proposals that would have transformed the property into a significant events venue with amplified music, alcohol, and large-scale gatherings. We succeeded in preventing those because they were wholly incompatible with the surrounding environment, violated many core aspects of the local zoning ordinance, and the East Bay Township Board ultimately decided that alcohol and amplified music weren't appropriate for this type of venue in the Lakes Area. It is deeply troubling to see the county now proposing the plans that echo those same inappropriate uses. We are in effect revisiting the same battle, only this time it is the government, not a private organization, proposing to disregard the property's natural setting, the community's well-being, and the stated wishes of its elected township representatives. I urge you to realign the park's future with its original purpose, a sanctuary for nature, learning, and low-impact recreation, not a site for high-intensity events. The people of Grand Travers County deserve a park that reflects the values of stewardship, respect for neighbors, and protection of irreplaceable natural assets. Our gifts, financially, personally, and in principle, was made with the belief that this property would serve the public in a way that honors its location and history. The current proposal risks betraying that trust. I ask that you reconsider and to choose a course that safeguards both the property and the public interest for generations to come. Thank you. Casey Cowell.
Thanks, Brandon.
My name is Ralph Bednarz. I'm a lakefront property owner on Rennie Lake in the township, and I'm the current president of the Rennie Lake Association, ROA. The ROA is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization with the purpose of preserving and protecting the water quality, ecosystem services, and quality of life in Rennie Lake and its watershed through education, leadership, and collaboration. We appreciate the opportunity to comment on the site plan for the public park at the former Camp Greillick property. This portion of the Camp Greillick property includes approximately 3,000 feet of ecologically sensitive Rennie Lake shoreline and associated bottom land, and is adjacent to several riparian properties. As such, we have a significant interest in the future uses of this property and the resulting impact on the lake and the quality of life of the Rennie Lake community. We support the county's plans for positive and low-impact uses of the property, such as environmentally respectful recreation, outdoor education, and youth programming in camps. These activities can provide valuable opportunities for residents while preserving the natural beauty and integrity of the area, including the Brownbridge Quiet Area addition. It is critical that any proposed uses align with the principles of environmental conservation and community well-being. We applaud the county's decision to not allow, that's not allow, outside watercraft access to the lakes, Rennie, Spider, and Bass via the park property. We are opposed to any intense uses that include large-scale events, alcohol, and amplified music. We do not feel that these are appropriate uses for a park in the Forest Lakes Area, especially one that includes a conservation easement with the Grand Travers Regional Land Conservancy and is adjacent to the lakes in the Brownbridge Quiet Area addition. Thank you for your service, and thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Ralph.
My name's Judy Pelto, East Lake, East Bay Township. I'm going to try not to repeat a lot of things, but I support the concept of having Camp Greillick becoming a county park in East Bay Township. However, I don't believe that amplified music, large-scale events, and alcohol are fitting near the Brownbridge Quiet Area and the Lakes Area. Environmental noise pollution is defined as any outdoor sound created by human activity in which people or wildlife are exposed involuntarily. Amplified music, large events, and alcohol all contribute to increased environmental pollution in the Brown Bridge in Lakes Area. Noise pollution profoundly disrupts wildlife by masking essential communication signals impacting foraging and breeding behaviors, resulting in reduced survival and reproduction. Long-term exposure for humans results in a rise in blood pressure, increased psychological stress, mental health, and cognition problems, as well as lower birth rates and decrease in the quality of life. A specific number of attendees should be established for the maximum number of attendees for large-scale events. The number of parking spaces available is too big a variable, as attendees could come in vehicles, holding four to eight people, and rented buses. There's no way to know how many people you would actually end up with. Please restricting, please consider restricting event sizes to 50 or less, with an exception for educational events. Lastly, Forest Lakes roads are difficult traveling in daylight, and at night, in the dark, the very winding two-lanes can be tricky to navigate while unimpaired. Trust me, I know that personally. Adding increased event traffic and alcohol fueled, alcohol-fueled drivers will undoubtedly increase the number of accidents. Large events with amplified music and alcohol are better fit for the East Bay commercial hotel areas of the township or many other places in Grand Travers County. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Good evening. Caitlin Filinski, East Bay Township resident. A couple of weeks ago, I was paddleboarding Arbutus Lake with my husband and our dog at about 7:20 PM. Keep in mind, this is before quiet hours. The lake was perfectly still and peaceful, and I thought to myself, how inappropriate would amplified music be right now? Ironically, at that very moment, John Chase came kayaking into Fifth Lake of Arbutus. From across the lake while on From across the lake while on my paddleboard, I could hear him talking to another gentleman, also in a kayak. I knew it was John because he was talking about his workday. He was explaining that on Thursdays, he brings his boat to the office so he can go out to the island, I'm assuming Power, to check in with the ranger that lives on-site. I only know these details because the Forest Lakes are regularly that quiet and peaceful in sound travels over water. He was speaking at a very reasonable volume, yet I could hear every word from across the lake. And he was utilizing East Bay Township's park, a park that does not allow alcohol. Despite the lack of alcohol, this park is very well-used and very well-loved. If I can easily hear one man's conversation from across the lake, how intrusive will amplified music be? It will absolutely impair neighbors and Brown Bridge hikers' welfare and peace, which is a violation of East Bay Township's noise ordinance. As you are discussing tonight, please keep in mind the county's sound test is flawed. It was one speaker with no other background noise, and the windows were closed. To be more realistic with testing, you would need to add fifty people to the mix, either shouting over the music while trying to have a conversation, or others thinking they have pipes as good as Whitney Houston's belting out lyrics on top of the amplified sound. And I'm sure more times than zero, the windows will be open because Besser does not have air conditioning and dance floors get sweaty. Lastly, tobacco and marijuana are prohibited. Why does alcohol have to be allowed? I cannot walk into Home Depot with a beer or an elementary school. There is a time and a place for drinking, and a natural area with a focus on youth education and mental health is not the place. So think about the true intent of Camp Greilich. Is it the youth education and recreational safe haven that was pitched to the county commission for approval? Or is it a commercial enterprise with obtrusively loud music, alcohol consumption, and large events? You cannot have both. They do not mix. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin.
My name's Larry Mudd. I also live in East Bay Township. I'm also a member of the not-for-profit group called Protect Forest Lakes. And recently, we did submit to all of you via email a petition that was signed by 292 people. I'm happy to report it's now up to 295 people, and I'd like to read that. Petition agreement. I agree that intense uses that include, okay, that include large-scale events, alcohol, and amplified music are inappropriate for the county park's location in the environmentally sensitive Forest Lakes and alongside the Brown Bridge Quiet Area. Passive recreation, outdoor education, and youth programming should be encouraged, but large events, alcohol, and amplified music would pose great threats to the safety, character, and environment of the Forest Lakes region. I also hope that you guys all noticed on, when we sent that, we also included the Protect Forest Lakes logo, which simply says Protect Forest Lakes at the top. At the bottom, it says, "We love it here." And because we love it here, generally, our petition is a request for help. We need your help to feel safe, to retain the character of the area, and to protect the environment. And we believe that you have the tools to help us in your zoning ordinance. Thank you, and actually, I'm saying thank you for at least 295 people.
Thank you, Larry.
Good evening. Fonny Peters, East Bay Township property owner. I have some questions I would like you to consider in your deliberations on alcohol use. This one sounds silly to even have to ask out loud, but why is there so much allowance for alcohol consumption in a place where the focus is supposed to be youth programming? Why would we not embrace the city's healthier drinking culture plan that encourages more public events that aren't alcohol-based? Why should any of us be expected to compromise on the safety of our children who will learn to drive on these roads? If a buzzed or intoxicated driver leaving a public event kills someone on our roads, do you think the deceased parents and kids will feel better knowing that they lost a family member due to a public event rather than a private event? Our roads are challenging for the sober. Winding, no shoulder, low line of sight, full of wildlife, bikers, and hikers. Removed from active police presence in town, do you think it's responsible to put buzzed and drunk drivers on these roads? Many Forest Lake residents cannot get to town without driving past one end of Hobbs Highway or the other. Is it reasonable for you to make it so that their only access to town depends on their decisions of the drivers leaving county events? Is it reasonable for Brown Bridge users to now have to do a drunk driver risk calculation before hiking or biking on these adjacent roads? Why is the county pressing so hard to amplify alcohol culture when not one person in an input session requested it? If you approve alcohol sales and distribution at public events, what is your plan for making more ride shares available, and will you ensure that the county's vetted public partners will be assisting in designating these supports? And finally, why does one drop of alcohol need to be poured to achieve the park's excellent vision, especially around youth education? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Scott Tinker, Arbutus Lake Commissioners. Good to see you and thanks for your work tonight. I have three questions for you to consider tonight. One, have you already made up your minds on this issue? And if you have, why? I urge you to unmake up your minds, if you have, and listen to the voices of people. Second, what was representative of the public on this park has changed from what's being proposed now? That seems to be a trend with private developers, landscapers, and now the government. One thing, show one thing, do something else. As some of you are well aware, we're dealing with this on Arbutus Lake. And with little and no enforcement capacity, well, guess what happens? Mindy pointed this out at a recent commission meeting for this very proposal. She observed alcohol-amplified-music events were not on your original list, John. Why are they there now? No need to talk about all the other great things. Focus on these. Commissioners, why is the county proposing these changes? Certainly, it can't be for money. Are the changes acceptable to you as citizens and commissioners? Or do you feel duped by bait and switch? If you don't feel duped, should we feel duped? Somebody's getting duped. Close your eyes and picture number three. A large park in a lake, an environmentally sensitive area, with lots of visitors, young and old, there to enjoy the nature, the outdoors with one another, to detach briefly from the electronic world. Picture the cottages right next to that park or across the lake from the park that have been there for decades, some a century. Now picture a few groups of visitors cranking up the music, opening the coolers, and letting it rip, not sipping a beer while throwing around a disc golf, which I would do, or listening to a string quartet play "Stairway to Heaven," but really cranking up the tailgater because this is their one weekend to get away and live it up, and every week, a new group comes in to do that. Now do this. Pretend like that cottage inundated daily by alcohol and noise is your cottage, your family, your kids, your grandkids. Would you vote to pass this if it was you? Three questions. Have you made up your mind, or will you listen to the people? Do you feel duped? Are you going to stand up to the bait and switch? Would you approve it if it was your cottage? Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
My name is Sue Svensson, and I live on Rennie Lake. And I'm understanding that this is our last effort, and where we can ask you to please show some rationale to what you're supposed to be doing, which is to consider the viewpoints of other people and the science of the noise pollution, and also consider that our master plan and our ordinances should be followed. I understand this is a difficult situation. The Besser Lodge is a beautiful building, but it sits right there, right on Rennie, with a big deck. The windows will be open in the summer, and what's being proposed, I'm pretty sure if we're following the money. It needs alcohol, we need weddings. It's to pay for that building and to support it. So why don't we just come out and say that? Unfortunately, we don't have an answer to that, other than it's not a necessary use that's allowed by the ordinances. It's just not allowed. So why give them that? Then you also have conservation people who are saying, there are big donors who are willing to donate for principles that we would like to see, which is appropriate for the region, which has to do with the environmental, keeping the looms, keeping the nature, getting youth involved, like the Boy Scouts used to be. These were the original purposes for why these buildings were put there. The campground also is kind of secondary to me. I'm worried about fire risks. I don't like the shooting range. I said that before. That has no place here next to the Brown Bridge Quiet Area, no place again next to this. I don't think I would need the symphony in the amphitheater, but something small would be appropriate. So I think that you just need to really back this and get to what the ordinances require. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Matt Takowski, East Bay Township. Offering social spaces without the pressure to drink. As alcohol-free environment is a setting or situation where alcoholic beverages are not present or permitted, this can encompass various settings from individual homes to workplaces, social events, and even entire communities. The goal is to create a space that promotes safety, well-being, and inclusivity by removing the risks and potential harm associated with alcohol consumption. Alcohol-free events and social gatherings are becoming increasingly popular, catering to diverse preferences and promoting inclusivity. Benefits of alcohol-free environments. Eliminating alcohol reduces the risk of accidents, injuries, and violence associated with impaired judgment and behavior. The alcohol-free drinking trend is gaining momentum. More people are choosing non-alcoholic options when socializing or unwinding. As John has pointed out in the past, people do recreate in different ways, and that's something we need to support. This plan misses the mark widely by pushing for something the public clearly doesn't want, nor the township doesn't want, and ignoring a pressing need this park could meet, and that's a safe place for families, youth, sober and sober curious to recreate away from alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you, Ma'am.
Steve Largent, East Bay Township resident. I also attended Camp Greilich. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but, so I don't have anything prepared. But, you know, Camp Greilich shaped my ethic as far as the outdoors. I went to school to become a biologist, came home, was lucky enough to get a job at the Conservation District, wrote the management plan for Brown Bridge. But the Brown Bridge Quiet Area Management Plan states that, you know, the natural world is first, and humans are visitors to this natural world. We are stewards of the land, and we, as stewards, need to make sure that our actions really are thought out and make sure that we reduce the impact where we can. It is truly unfortunate that that property has, you know, provided Rotary in this area in Traverse City and the region with over $50 million in gas and oil resources, and that has gone to a lot of good. But to make that property have to, I guess, impact the natural world in any way, we, as stewards, need to make sure that's reduced wherever we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Going once, going twice? Okay, we'll close the public comment period for this portion of the meeting and bring it back to the commission. Claire, let's come back to correspondence. We only have a few things on our desk, but is there anything else we need to touch base on before we get going?
Yeah, the only additional item of correspondence, you'll see the Business View Magazine. That's a North American publication. East Bay Township was highlighted in that. They highlight municipalities doing innovative things, and so this month's edition had a nice article on East Bay Township, so I included that on your desk.
And before we get too far, for anybody who doesn't know, could we introduce Catherine to the mic as well?
I'm Catherine Kaufman. I am the new township attorney. I'm from Bauckham Fall in Kalamazoo, and we have an office in Charlevoix. Also with me tonight is attorney Nicole Essed. She is an attorney in my firm. So both of us are here tonight. Thank you for allowing us to be here.
Thanks for coming along. You picked a good one. We'll bring it back to the commission with conversations and reports. Mindy from the Township Board.
So we had a meeting on August 11th, I believe the date was. I left my notes in my car, so I'm going off my memory, but a couple of things that were on the docket were the ambulance. We're getting a new ambulance in East Bay Township. We ordered it in '23, I believe, and we might get it by the end of the year, maybe January. It was on the, it was on our agenda because, of course, it came in a little bit more than the anticipated cost, but it was within 4%. So they did a couple of things, like they took away the municipality benefits and stuff like that. So that's why we saw about a $10,000 increase for the $330,000 ambulance we are getting. We also talked about the metro budget, and we did talk about the Brownfield Plan for the Crimson Development, and I think that's going to be a really good one because we're doing a couple of different options out there financially to try to make it more affordable, but have some really nice units for our residents.
Good to hear. Any questions from Mindy? Okay, Paul, ZBA, no meeting. That's easy. Back to Claire, planning and zoning. Anything else?
Just a few quick updates. Our short-term rental license renewal for existing licenses opened today, and I will just mention that we're going to have a few available licenses for next year. I think right now we have about four licenses available, but they would still need to meet that distance separation 1,000-foot. Farmer's Market, just a reminder, that runs through October 2nd. There's a giveaway right now, so if you spend $15, you post your post on social media. We've got some nice tote bags, and so those are still available. And then I also just wanted to acknowledge Sam La Souza, the planning and special projects specialist. Sorry, Sam, if I butchered that title, but was recognized for the 40 under 40 for the TC Business News, so congratulations to Sam.
Nice. Congrats. Next, any questions for Claire? Okay, we'll bring it back under item number eight, under approval of the meeting minutes, August 5th. Any comments, corrections, alterations you need to look at? Nothing jumps off the page. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 5th, 2025, meeting on Planning Commission.
Support. Thank you. Motion by Mindy, seconded by Steve for approval of the meeting minutes from August 5th, 2025. All's in favor, seconded by everybody saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up, under item nine, is the new business before the Planning Commission review of both the bylaws and election of officers. And Claire, is there any other points? And I know, Paul, it's just one thing we want to talk about. Is there anything bylaws related that we need to jump off the page from staff's perspective first?
So I guess I would make one recommendation. It sounds like Paul does have a suggested edit to our bylaws. In meeting with our legal counsel before the meeting, they also had a recommendation to the bylaws. So my recommendation would be to come back in October with a few different, with a summary of changes to the bylaws. So would love to hear, Paul, what your recommendation is tonight, but perhaps we could make some changes and present that kind of more holistic version to the Planning Commission at the next meeting.
This is hardly way- This is hardly weighty, but I just noticed that, and this was the item that on page nine of our packet, under 3.8 Order of Business, we had changed our order of business as to switching around when approval of minutes was made versus the public input. In the bylaws, our stated bylaws indicate that the order of business is just the opposite, with approval of minutes first and then public input. So all I'm saying is that to make these two agree, one has to be switched, in which case would be the bylaws. In addition to that, my point was just to announce it because we also are required to give notification of any bylaw change three days prior to any meeting. So that's my announcement to you and your over declare that when we put in the changes, this would be one of them.
Yeah, no, that's a good catch. And we did make a change to our agenda to be consistent with Township Board. And we were kind of trying to make all the agendas the same format so we can make sure the bylaws reflect that. Thank you.
So we're off the hook on the bylaws for this month. We'll come back with changes and alterations hopefully next month, Claire. Does that sound fair? And then we'll reconsider that point. The most fun part of the agenda is the election of officers. Is that something that we need to have a conversation about? And I think maybe the cleanest way to do it and what we've done in the past is just go piece by piece or one fell swoop. Is that the pleasure of the commission? Unless someone wants to gavel.
Chuckle, chuckle. You keep that gavel.
Make that motion then.
Yeah.
I made it last year. I make it again. I'm going to do it in a full sweep.
Okay.
I'd like to recommend that we keep our current Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. Can I do it all in one sweep?
Support. Yes.
Okay. Support.
Support. Okay.
If you're all willing, because I think you're doing a fantastic job.
Do you want to include in the motion just who we've got? The names, just for the record?
Dan. I don't know your last names necessarily. And Carl Ferguson. I can see his.
Okay, so we have a motion by Renee, seconded by Mindy, to retain Dan Leonard, Paul Gonzalez, and Carl Ferguson as the Planning Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary of the Planning Commission for another annual moment. All's in favor, signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next up is Site Plan Review 9-25, Camp Greilich. Again, this is discussion. This is not a public hearing this evening, but I would like to turn it back over to staff and/or our attorneys for clarification on a few points before we get going. And then we'll come back to the applicant, and we'll give you some time. But Claire, if you want to set the table for us, it'd be greatly helpful.
Okay, so at this point, you're very familiar with the proposal before you tonight to repurpose the former Boy Scout camp as a county park. The parcel is Zon Lakes area. It's 196 acres. It's located with frontage on Bass, Rennie, and Spider Lake. The proposal, as you're aware, consists of Phase One and Phase Two. So Phase One is the only portion of the proposal that's in front of you for decision tonight. Recall that the county came in front of you in June with a sketch plan review. The Planning Commission had a number of questions and comments. And you will see in this updated proposal, there have been additional details provided related to the types of proposed activities, duration, and frequency. And the county will speak in more detail to that this evening, and it's also reflected in your staff report. One change that I did want to highlight in consultation with Township Legal Counsel, we were advised that it would be prudent to make a distinction between private and public gatherings. So it's one change since when you last reviewed. So public gatherings would be those that would generally be accepted as a part of county park operations, although they would not necessarily need to all be conducted by the county, just given the lean staff. But it would be more public in nature. In contrast, private gatherings would be reunions, graduation parties, weddings, those types of things. So because the township does not allow places of public assembly in the Lakes area, the county is limiting those gatherings, private events or private gatherings, to 50 or less, which is consistent with the Township zoning ordinance for places of public assembly. So does that make sense? We're differentiating a public park with private gatherings and then public, which is generally the types of activities that you would customarily see or would be part of general park operations. I'd say the majority of questions and concerns that have been raised are in relation to amplified music, alcohol, and large events and gatherings. So we have Township Legal Counsel is on hand to assist the Planning Commission with reviewing the application and site plan review standards in relation to what's being proposed. And specifically, we're leaning on Township Legal Counsel to help the Planning Commission kind of differentiate what comes under the authority of zoning versus what is outside of the scope of zoning. Related to traffic, we did reach out to Wade Trim. They have a traffic engineer downstate. They reviewed the proposal. There's a letter in the packet that's confirming a traffic study would not be triggered based on our ordinance and that they're not recommending any type of traffic study. You also see there's a summary of the Phase One Environmental Assessment, Phase Two, the Duke-Hare Investigation Report, and the Baseline Environmental Assessment. The county has submitted the full packet to us. It was 1,100 pages, so we requested just a summary, although the full information documentation is on file with the township. We also shared it with our township engineer. So at this time, there is no concerns with the proposed operations and plans to fence off, you know, they'll be fencing off the gun range as a part of Phase One. So based on Phase One proposal, there's no concerns based on the findings of the Baseline Environmental Assessment and other analysis conducted by Atwell Mabi. You'll see in the packet, staff, the staff report has proposed findings. Under the site plan standards, I have added comments, but I'd be looking for Planning Commission to go through each one of the standard and determine whether it's been met or not. That will be during your deliberation. You'll see that there's also additional comments related to the proposed trail within the vegetative buffer, capacity limitations for Besser Lodge, and the anticipated frequency of public and educational events, are just some items for discussion. So with that, I will turn it over to Catherine, who I believe had.
I just wanted to remind you this, as you all heard, this is a site plan review. As many of the public indicated, you're going to review your standards for site plan review. And in your staff report, Claire has listed all the sections of the zoning ordinance that apply. She has made some determinations on some of the categories, like signs and district standards, et cetera. As she mentioned, under the site plan review standards in section 6.1 of the zoning ordinance, you are going to need to walk through each one of those and make a finding on each one before you ultimately make whatever decision you want to make. It's important to understand under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, MCL 125.3501 sub 5, that a site plan shall be approved if it contains information required by the zoning ordinance and it complies and meets those standards or with other planning documents, then it shall be approved. So this is a site plan review. It's not a special use. It's, I think, different than previous time around. And I understand this is a county park, and that's permitted use, and that's why it's going as a site plan. You can put reasonable conditions on a site plan approval, but you cannot go as far as you might with a special use approval. You're going to look at the standards in your ordinance for site plan review, and you're going to walk through those and make determinations on if they're satisfied. And if they are all satisfied, then you should probably look at approving. And I'm just saying this, I'm not telling you what to do in any way, but you need to walk yourselves through. And then if it can be approved, if it meets the standards or can meet the standards with reasonable conditions, then you should probably consider approving it. And I'm here to answer those questions if you have them. If you want to ask me anything as you go through, please feel free to do so.
I think maybe before we get to the applicant, is there any questions right off the top that anyone wanted to throw at either the council or staff?
Let's go back to public and private events. Can you elaborate a little bit further as to the private being limited to 50? And then you're saying no public events? Or public events without that limitation of 50? I want to make sure I heard clearly.
I think, as I understand it, the applicant has offered to limit the private events to 50 and under. And as Claire mentioned, that's to do with the assembly, right? Yes. So I think the applicant will explain to you when they present that they do not want to limit the number of people attending public events, which we have determined would be in keeping with their educational mission or their parks and recreation mission. So as Claire mentioned, it may not, the public event may not necessarily be carried out by the park staff themselves, but it would be in somehow conjunction with the park or with the county park activities that they normally host or handle, as they may have at some of their other county parks. Is that a fair way of saying it? So that's our understanding of the distinction. And the county has voluntarily, and you can ask to get more clarity, they have voluntarily agreed to limit the private events, but they have not agreed to limit the numbers at the public events. And I hope I've got that right, but please feel free to clarify or ask for more explanation.
Okay, I'm going to let John. Go ahead.
I just have one more administrative question. Do the, were the operations and management plan that's in draft form right now be attached as a condition or part of the approval? Or is it totally something that is a function of what the county does in the future, and they could change it, they could do whatever they want?
So we have a limited authority under law to put a lot of conditions on a site plan. Generally, it's just going to make sure that whatever standards are in your site plan review can be achieved if possible. If there are statements, like we agree no amplified music past 7:30, we agree, you know, no private events, more than 50 people, I would want those to be offered and stated on the record by the applicant, and I would then roll them in as a condition that was offered voluntarily by the applicant, if that makes sense, to your site plan approval. Is that the question you're asking?
Right, I mean, I think we're basing, we're going to base some of our discussion on what's included in that operations and management plan. And I'm just wondering, does that hold forth with the approval?
If we, yes, it should. Because what the applicant, application is submitted, if it's part of their application, I would clarify, are they willing to make that, take the draft off of it and live with that, with the terms of that, or otherwise revise it here in the public on the record?
Okay. What do you think, Mindy?
On page, it talks about, the county has indicated they're willing to provide an annual update or report to the township. What do we have that could help us if there's something that's a problem out there?
So you're going to approve a site plan, which will have parking spaces, landscaping, setbacks, and possibly voluntarily offered conditions by the county. Okay? Generally, you don't have the authority to put those types of conditions on a site plan versus a special land use. But if they're voluntarily offered, we would like to try to memorialize those, probably through a motion if you approve it. I don't, I'm not saying you will, all right? But we would like to memorialize it through conditions attached to the site plan with the acknowledgement that they're voluntarily offered, all right? And in that case, if you have them come back every year and something has gone awry, they're not following the conditions of the site plan, then it's a violation of the site plan, and we can proceed through enforcement mechanisms to enforce the site plan. All right? So let's say they voluntarily offer, we will always have private events be 50 people or less, and we find out on more than one instance, they were 100 people. I mean, not just one person off, but significantly off. All right? When you have them come back, and maybe if that's a condition is indicated on page, you know, 17 of 176 here, you could ask them to come back and do an annual report or submit an annual report. And we always have the ability, if somebody violates the site plan, to seek enforcement through that mechanism, possibly revoking the site plan or doing something else.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, and we have the applicant with us this evening. Please go ahead and explain where we're at today and what we're looking to do on the property.
Good evening, commissioners, staff, members of the East Bay Township community. Thank you for the opportunity to join you this evening. My name is John Chase. For those who have not had the chance to meet yet, I'm the Director of Parks and Facilities for Grand Traverse County. Our purpose here this evening is to discuss the site plan for your soon-to-be newest Grand Traverse County Park, Camp Greilich. And we were last before you on June 3rd, as had been mentioned earlier, with a sketch plan that, based on the specifications who were provided, gave only high-level information. We learned a lot in that process and since then. And since then, our team has put considerable work into crafting an operations and management plan, as has just been mentioned. It considers both the uniqueness of the property and the request of the local community. We acknowledge there's still a difference of opinion with the local residents on some aspects of the plan, and we believe that we voluntarily met or exceeded the requests made at that June 3rd meeting. You've seen the extensive PowerPoint. There's a lot of information there. There's a fair amount of conjecture and some little bit of speculation, but today we're going to focus on what we're proposing rather than what we are not proposing. So let's talk a little bit about how we're going to create a great park that we can all be proud of, and that's really what we're focused on. The park plan contains two categories of uses. So one, those that are consistent with historical use and activity on the property for the prior 102 years, first as a rotary camp, and then since 1955 until 2016 as a scout camp. And second, those that are consistent with primary and accessory uses of a park. So proposed in Phase One that we're talking about today, which is in the plan that you have before you, include programming, things like outdoor skills education, environmental education, youth day camps, public amenities, hiking, biking, winter sports, trails, disc golf, bouldering wall, mud kitchen, beach and water access, orienteering course, human foosball, which surprisingly to me was a big hit. We had a lot of people asking about that and wanting to keep that. A mini BMX track that we found on property well after we had purchased the property, didn't even realize that was there. Drum lodge, museum, and more. And then rental spaces, pavilion, group cabins, semi-rustic cabins, fireball, chapel, and Besser Lodge. So for the programming, as we've stated repeatedly, programming is our primary purpose for the property. Nothing would make us happier than creating a thriving hub of outdoor recreation for youth and adults alike. Adults like to be educated as well. And staff have been making inroads with local programming partners to gauge interest in future opportunities. There's a wealth of providers locally for outdoor skills development and environmental education, wildlife exploration, monarch migration, raptor education, family art, theme geocaching, orienteering, first aid skills, camp craft, outdoor yoga, forest bathing. I know it sounds weird, but it's immersing yourself in the forest. Intergenerational picnics, hiking club visits, guided color walks, moonlit hikes, preschool storytime, seed collection, vernal pool exploration, family craft nights, family game nights, the possibilities are endless. And that's where we're placing our focus. That's what we really want to see. Facility rental practices that are outlined in the operations and management plan are specifically structured to promote that activity by giving an advantage for reservation. In terms of public amenities, there's a great list of low-impact amenities already on property for friends and families to enjoy. To name a few, as I mentioned earlier, year-round trails, disc golf course, bouldering wall, orienteering course, human foosball, and the mini BMX track. These amenities have been enjoyed by hundreds, if not thousands, of guests over the years under a relatively closed environment. Again, as I mentioned earlier, since 1955, the property was a scout camp. You had to be a scout to experience the benefits of the property. And the goal of us adding this property to our park system is to allow all members of the community the opportunity to experience the uniqueness of the property. We're specifically targeting a couple of areas for the park for new low-impact amenities for families with young children. Activities include the mud kitchen, a story walk, and a fairy garden. We're collaborating with Woodland School and the Traverse Area District Library to create a couple of these spaces. And these are amenities that are not present locally. So they're things that would create an attraction for those young families. And we give an opportunity for people to have something in their local environment without having to travel all the way across town or to somewhere else for something even similar. There's an extensive patchwork quilt of trails already on the property. Some are well laid out, others not so much. They go through sensitive areas or promote erosion. We've been working with the Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy to close off the trails that don't serve the land well and map out a better, more sustainable, conservation-minded network of trails on the property. Rental spaces. We recognize that there are going to be times when the program spaces in the park are not used for programming. Consistent with the uses of a public park, we propose making these areas available for public use. Fees from the rentals would offset the cost of maintaining these spaces and create means to ensure that the cost associated with private use is not borne by the taxpayers. We respect that private rentals have been an area of concern, and we responded to those concerns in several ways. So as noted in your packet and discussed at many public meetings and in our written plan, these fee-based private rentals will be limited to 50 guests with further restrictions on activity. We're voluntarily limiting potential sound from activities by ensuring that any music associated with an activity be shut off no later than 7:30. And this time coincides with the high-speed boating ordinance for Grand Traverse County, which is unofficially observed by some members of the surrounding community as quiet hours. And I should mention that that restriction is more restrictive than the community in general. We also respect that allowing alcohol into the park has been an area of concern to some, as you've heard this evening. We've also voluntarily placed restrictions there beyond those imposed by the state of Michigan to disallow any private activity where a permit or license would be needed to sell alcohol. We currently allow alcohol in our other parks, and it's not posed a problem, even in our remote parks. Yes, we do have other remote parks. We're offering this ability not to create a venue for people to get drunk. We're offering this as an opportunity for those who choose to respectfully enjoy a beverage among friends during their chosen activity. And kudos to Mr. Sloane on the merit badge, very creative, even if it's a little stretch there, so. All right, thank you. I also want to mention that this particular area is not a change. When we met the first time, when we met in, at the Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy and did our first public input session there, we did a second public input session at Camp Greilich in Besser Lodge. I specifically remember talking about the fact that we would be looking to rent those spaces and make them available for private use, and that we did offer alcohol in our other parks, and we would plan to do so here as well. So further, activities on property must be contained on property. We've committed to keep half of our 103 parking spaces available in the main lot for public use. And we are only using that main lot. So we're going to, if you're familiar with the property, if you've been on the property before, just past the main lot, there's a yellow gate. That gate will remain closed, and so people won't be entering the depth of the park. They'll just be parking in the main parking lot. And we're putting no parking signs up all along the entrance drive. And we've done that because we wanted to make sure we kept everything contained in that lot, and we're also making sure we keep fire lanes open per GT Metro's request. As an additional layer of protection for the property, it's governed by a well-documented and actively managed conservation agreement, or conservation easement, excuse me. Functionally for us, this means that when we develop or make changes to any natural spaces, we work through the Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy to ensure that those changes are consistent with the easement requirements and they're focused on land conservation. We are planning to host our own programming, as has been discussed, and we'll work with community providers to bring programming to the property. A few examples. Tara, our Deputy Director of Parks, she had the opportunity to join TCAP's Welcome Back Professional Development Event this past week, where she talked with teachers, 1,500 teachers attended the event, by the way, about ways that they can engage with Camp Greilich for experiential environmental education. They were very interested in that, and that really serves the mission. We've had numerous inquiries from day and overnight camp providers interested in bringing their programming to Camp Greilich. The scouts have been excited about the opportunity to introduce the new generation of scouts to the Klondike Derby, to the Pinewood Derby, and other positive events that were held for 60-something years on the property, and the opportunity to be able to bring those back. We've also had discussions with the Michigan Outdoor, with a Michigan-based Outdoor Conservation and Education Association about bringing their daytime educational conference to Camp Greilich. We've talked briefly with TC Phil about the potential to use the amphitheater for an outdoor concert, although there are some logistical challenges for them with the venue, like, how do you get a piano down there? So they have to figure some of those things out. But whether it's them or someone else, a little classical music in our lives is a good thing. And I know at least one person in today's audience who's told me they wouldn't mind walking over from their home to enjoy a concert in a paper cup of wine, because no glass in our parks. These activities may have more than 50 people. Each of these opportunities will be carefully vetted by our team to ensure that they're opportunities that are mission-aligned, that they don't interfere with other uses, that they're consistent with park uses. They create a positive benefit. This isn't a loophole, as some might have suggested. It's a way to make sure that we can be inclusive and not put a teacher in the position of having to exclude part of a class for an educational program. We think about those public events, we're really focused more on that education piece. We see schools coming in buses and coming with groups to be able to experience the property in many different ways. In the chart that you saw in the earlier presentation, it takes data from our submission, it's pages 6 to 69 in your packet, takes it a little out of context. So for example, a day camp program has to have a space where they have, where they house campers in the event of a weather emergency. That is required under their license, that they have to have a space where they can put everybody should a weather emergency come. For us, that space is Besser Lodge. Even if they aren't using Besser Lodge, even if they never use it, we still have to reserve that space to make sure that day camps can have that space. So at peak use, we're projecting up to about 100 days of camp during the summer, exhausting most of those public use days for Besser. This type of programming would also simultaneously use the other structures on property. So while a day camp, as I mentioned earlier, they might have one of the cabins as their base of operations, they might have Besser Lodge as their shelter, their emergency shelter, and they may also be using the pavilion to host lunch and whatnot. So those days that you see on that list, they aren't individual days, they're consecutive days. So, but we've included those days in our estimates, making the program days concurrent rather than separate, and it's that type of public use programming that we're seeking. Talk of large-scale, high-impact events hasn't come from us. And that's not, and has never has been part of our plan for the park. East Bay Township already has Timber Ridge, they've got Mount Holiday. They're ideal spaces for large outdoor, large-scale events. Let them continue to excel in that area while we serve the niche that they cannot serve. Throughout East Bay Township's 2023 master plan development process, there were stated desires from residents to develop public parks in proximity to existing neighborhoods, a desire to increase community gathering amenities in parks, and a desire for more recreational amenities with an aging population in mind. We heard that feedback in our Parks and Recreation Plan, too. We heard people asking for a greater presence in the south area of the county. People want to feel connected to one another. The community gathering amenities in this park can create that connection. Educational programs create better stewards of the world around us. The recreational amenities cross generational barriers and help meet the needs and the desires of all ages. It's unfortunate that we've heard the narrative that reflects strictly an either-or mentality. That thought process isn't inclusive, but instead is exclusive. And we maintain that we're faced with a both-and situation that allows us to focus on education and recreation while serving the wide education and recreation desires of the entire Grand Traverse County community. We can manage and operate a park that allows a variety of things and has guardrails that ensure a positive result for the area and for the park. We do that today with our existing park system. Our partners and park visitors enjoy and thrive in an environment where people of all ages and interests can come together, enjoy the outdoors, both separately and together, and this park can help further that environment with educational programming and positive community partnerships as our priority. As for large-scale, high-impact events, the highest-impact activity we're imagining on property with the greatest number of people creating the most noise is a children's day camp. So thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Look forward to questions and look forward to bringing those goals and bringing this park to life.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Bringing it back to the commission, questions, comments, things we need to flush out while the applicant's here?
So Claire, at the last meeting, I asked about the Board of Trustees' decision prior to the GOREC pod being pulled and that being recorded in the minutes. So you were going to check with legal counsel to see, you know, how that stood. Can you give us an update, maybe?
Can you?
It's related to the Board of Trustees' deliberation on the PUD planning development of GOREC.
And as I understand it, the plan was withdrawn, right? So I'm not sure I understand the question. I'm sorry.
So the Board of Trustees said no alcohol, no amplified music, 15 days prior to GOREC pulling their application, so it's in the minutes, and we were discussing whether that holds up legally?
Well, again, this is a special, this is a site plan, a straight-up site plan. That was a planned unit development, which is a little bit different. You know, there's some different standards. And you have more flexibility to put conditions on a planned unit development. Herein, there's a couple of things going on. This is a permitted use in this zoning district. There's case law in Michigan opining on the ability of a municipality, the preemption of local zoning regarding county buildings. And so that's why we've talked about what are the buildings on this property, what would be the uses in those buildings in those property, what is the historical use of those buildings in this property, and most recently in the wineries case from Lelandaw, discussion about amplified music and if there's an alcohol license that you cannot limit amplified music. So there's a lot of things going on here that are a little bit different from the previous application. So in terms of what the Township Board was discussing in a PUD a couple of years ago, yes, I mean, it's not binding on this planning commission, you can talk about that, but we have less authority under law now than we would have had then under a planned unit development to put restrictions or very heavy conditions on. That's why I mentioned voluntary conditions. I think he's mentioned, the applicant has mentioned, things they would voluntarily offer up, which if that's, if this goes forward and you want to approve it, we should memorialize those in any type of motion. But our authority to limit things is not as strong with a permitted use in a site plan as it was with a PUD, if that makes sense.
I do understand what you're saying. However, the Board of Trustees said it wasn't appropriate in that area. It's a lakes area, and that's kind of, and I understand this is not a PUD, they didn't file a PUD, GOREC pulled their application, but the Board of Trustees still had that sentiment.
But this is a permitted use in the zoning district?
The park is a permitted use. Not necessarily alcohol and amplified music. East Bay Township doesn't allow alcohol in their parks. The county, yes, does.
And I understand that East Bay Township doesn't, and that's the choice of the Township Board, I imagine. The parks, as they're, as I understand it and from hearing from the application, they have traditionally allowed alcohol in their other parks in the county. I understand that's the case.
Correct.
We have to also understand the scope of the Michigan Supreme Court cases, both in the Pittsfield Township case and the Coloma Township case regarding county buildings, the ability, the preemption to some extent of local municipal zoning as applied to county buildings, and how much, how far that goes in terms of what uses they're asking to do in the lodge especially. Additionally, we have a recent Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals case from Lelandaw Township, which reaffirms the original decision by the Western District of Michigan about the preemption of forbidding amplified music if they have an alcoholic license to sell. So I, those are all the things that are kind of at play here, which make this a little bit different from what was the PUD a couple of years ago. Now, you can decide, when you walk through your standards of the site plan review, if in fact you think those things would not be met, you couldn't prove, approve a land use, the park, under the standards that you have here, you would have to discuss that and make a finding then that these things would prevent you from approving the site plan. And I'm not sure if you can, if that's the case or not. That'll be up for you to discuss and decide.
Any other questions for the applicant while you're here?
John, I have a quick question regarding the need for these events, because you're going to be charging for events, and there'll be fees for camping in Besser Lodge and different items. Is that money needed for the maintenance, or is the endowment, if they, once they get to their next level, will be available for life and you won't need that money for maintenance?
Sure. Thanks for the question. So it's not about money. It's about making sure that if someone's renting a space for private use, that they are paying for that space as opposed to the public paying for that space. It's consistent use with parks. We do it in all of our park properties. East Bay Township charges to rent their pavilions as well, same type of thing. Now, if somebody's walking into the park and wants to use that pavilion, it's not in use and not reserved, they can, it's first come, first served. But if somebody wants dedicated use for one of those spaces, that's when the, that's when the charge comes in.
Okay. So it's not necessarily needed, per se, to take care of the park itself with all the maintenance and nearly 200 acres?
Right. And so to go back to the events as well, now, again, I want to make that distinction. Private events, limited to 50 people. No more, 50, that's it. So the public events, what we're looking at is things like the school events. I don't want to be the one who has to tell Ms. Kramer's third-grade class that, sorry, she can only take 18 of the 23 kids in the class, because we've got an arbitrary cap on that. So we want to make sure that we're given the flexibility to be able to have those kinds of programs. I can get more through, I can get more third graders in a space than I can get adults into a space. So to put a specific cap on that just isn't, isn't the right thing. Another piece with events, just to give you a little bit more context, so hosting public benefit events like, well, East Bay does one, or does a couple. You do an annual sledding day in February, Grace McDonald Park. I'm certain that gets more than 50 people. Is that fair? Yeah. So there's more than 50 people. We're thinking things like that. That's, when we're looking at an event or an activity, that's what we look at from a park perspective, is what kind of, those kinds of things. We host a Winter Fest at Civic Center. We've hosted it there at Civic Center the last few years. This could be a great place to be able to do that. It is a free family event. Might get 150 people at the event, but it's a free family event where you can come and just enjoy the outdoors and on a cold winter's day when everybody's starting to get feeling shut in. Those are the kind of public events that we're looking at. And I already mentioned a few of the other things, are the educational kind of programs where schools and other kinds of groups, day camps, those are bringing those kinds of programs. So does that give you a little more context for what those are?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I want to talk about the elephant in the room. Let's talk about the alcohol policy that you have.
Sure.
And I want to divide that between the public and the private.
Okay.
Okay. The public events that you are talking about, I don't see where alcohol is involved at all.
Okay.
On the private ones, it says that you would not permit any of the, if in fact somebody needs to have a license, you're not going to permit this.
Right. So if they have to, for example, have a server, a server is a license, so for a served open bar, served cash bar, or if they were charging, charging admission for an event where alcohol is included, or if they are charging for alcohol at an event. In those cases, for private events, that would not be.
If you're charging, the answer is no.
Correct. If you're charging, you need to pull a state license for that or.
Right. And so if you're going to be charging for alcohol under any event, the answer is not going to, is going to be no.
For those private events, correct.
Now you're talking more about wedding.
Private event.
Now, I don't know. Does a wedding need to have a license?
A wedding itself does not need to have a license.
Not the wedding, yeah.
If they are having a server, yes, that server would need to be licensed. So if you're hosting, if you, Paul, has rented the space for your private event, your wedding, your birthday party, your bar mitzvah, whatever that may be, you are limited to 50 people and you cannot pull an alcohol permit.
Cannot.
Cannot.
Because, so therefore, a server in this case could be defined as not so much somebody serving a drink as much as the bartender behind the bar. If there's a bartender behind the bar and he's.
Compensated?
Not, well, he'd have to be, the answer is, it sounds to me like the answer is no. There would not be permitted alcohol at that event.
Right. So if that person's a tip-certified person, they're there and using their license, then yes, they would not be able to do that.
That doesn't mean someone couldn't bring their own beer in.
Right, right, right. And I'm trying to whittle down the things that are gone.
You are correct.
Yeah. So I mean, really, if you had a couple of people doing the golf.
Disc golf, yeah.
Yeah. They could have a beer.
They could have a beer, correct.
Is there, so is that primarily? Is there, so is that primarily the permissible thing when you talk about alcohol? That's about an individual bringing their own non-glass receptacle-
Thank you.
-that would be permitted to have alcohol, that person?
That's the kind of thing, yes. Now, again, it could also be your private party, right? So where you've got a cooler of beer, and your guests are enjoying that. Could be the person who's playing disc golf, carries a beer with them to enjoy while they're, while they're walking the course, something of that type.
Okay. So the possibility exists that the alcohol is permitted on those private events where in fact that, that alcohol is brought by the individual?
Yes.
Just trying to-
Yep.
-get in my mind what, at this point, we're going to be talking about.
Appreciate the clarity.
And with the use, permitted use in the future of a gun range, somebody could-
Well, we're not-
Fair enough, but I, that would be coming into play.
The next game.
I understand it's the next game, but-
For your future consideration, though, when we are planning, our planning process, it's kind of behind the scenes that we're thinking through that, the only thing that we're going to use that gun range for is supervised activities, educational programs, basically. But that's not on the table, as you'd mentioned. We're not, we're not close enough to be able to do that yet.
He's fine. Great. Okay.
One other simple point to bring up is the location of a trail that was being proposed with a 50-foot setback. And within that area, we've always tried to keep that area clean and natural as is. Is that something that you guys think that you'd have flexibility around in terms of navigating around, or-
We can reroute that. That's, that's fine.
Sticking on our-
There is actually an existing two-track on that space, so we didn't cut any new trail in that space. There was an existing sandy slope with no vegetation on it. We did put some stairs on that just to protect it against erosion, but there was no vegetation that was removed.
Okay.
Got it. Do you have the ability to move it back out of the 50-foot vegetative buffer zone?
If we don't, we would just reroute that and do a different trail. But like I said, there's already an existing, existing trail in that spot. It's a two-track.
Understood.
Yeah.
Understood. But it's an environmentally sensitive area.
Understood.
One more. On the noise management, do you envision that you would, would at this point permit amplified music or amplified sound?
We, yes. So, and again, going back to some of the things that we talked about, if you're hosting a children's sing-along, it's probably going to be amplified, but it's going to end at 7:30. All right? If you're hosting a family party for 50 people, you may have amplified music, but it would end by 7:30. And again, with all the restrictions that we're putting in those, 50 people, limits on alcohol, limits on time, limits on the ability to, for music, that is, limit on the ability to rent. So we're not going to allow private events to, we're only going to allow them to rent six months in advance, whereas we're going to allow any other programs, the educational programs, 12 months in advance. As I mentioned in the beginning, nothing would make us happier than filling the entire schedule with everything else and not having any space available for anything else.
Go ahead, Mindy.
On noise, I'm looking at page 13 of your plan, but I don't know what it is of our packet.
Okay, give me a moment to-
They're chopped over each other. It's section 13, which is the noise management in quiet hours.
Yes.
It says that, you know, the following activities are declared to be noise disturbances and prohibited. And I am looking at A, the playing of any sound reproduction device or musical instrument in such a manner or at such a volume as to be sufficiently audible to annoy or disturb the quiet comfort or repose of the persons in the vicinity.
Yes.
Who's going to be monitoring that?
We have a caretaker on property.
And, and is there going to be a phone number or something such that neighbors can get ahold of that caretaker on the property?
Yep. And that statement does mirror the East Bay Township noise ordinance as well. That is, that's directly from our park rules, as you'd mentioned.
John, I notice within your proposed plan as well, I think it says that you would have up to five people working on-site. Is that accurate?
I don't think we had a specific amount on there. It just depends on what's happening on property at any one time.
Okay.
We've got five, five full-time staff members right now.
Okay. Maybe that's what I was referring to. I was just trying to correlate it back to Mindy's point, because I like that idea. It's kind of a stopgap. But also, I appreciate the fact that there's someone on-site. As I think through other county parks, Powell Island is an example, that person's very active, and they have a heck of a job on the weekends in the summertime. I can assure you of that, especially with logistics involved. But I do know that I've just experienced that from, from that lens and kind of have seen things be handled in a certain way, that there is someone there, and they do respond.
Orleans is even a little bit more challenging. Not, not only because of the three-mile moat around it, around the property, so it is a more remote space, but if somebody's offshore, that's off jurisdiction. So we can control what's going on on the island, which is just like here. We can control what's happening within the property. Can't control what's happening outside the property.
Sure, sure. Understood. Well, John, I think maybe what we should do is kind of start the deliberations. We'll let you sit down, catch your breath, take a drink, and then we'll, we'll have a conversation amongst ourselves about the findings of fact, and then we just kick it off. And Claire, if you would, yes, thank you for your time. Claire, if maybe just logistically, if you would want to walk us through each finding, and then we can kind of deliberate and Anne can try and keep up.
So with the staff report, you'll see I went through the consistency with the master plan, the site conditions spelled out, environmental, transportation, adjacent land uses, went into some detail of the phasing. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that. Went through the phasing, the operations and management plan. And then for the zoning analysis, you'll see that I went through, beginning with district standards, just with the underlying lakes area. These are all nondiscretionary standards, so black and white. Is it located, located within, is it a use permitted by right in the district? Does it meet the impervious surface requirements? Does it meet the environmentally sensitive standards for permitted structures as well as the vegetative buffer? And as Dan mentioned, the vegetative buffer, this was found as partially satisfied due to the trail that was proposed to be within 50 feet of the ordinary high water mark.
So before we get too far-
That we flagged.
Yep. So before we get too far, is it appropriate for us to make a determination on each one line by line? Would you prefer that?
We would prefer that, especially as Claire does not make any conclusions when you get to 5.7 landscape and buffering, and then exterior lighting and site plan and review. So it would be best if you could walk through, starting in 3.1, point G, and look at her comments and determine, do you believe that is accurate or has this standard been satisfied?
So-
3.1?
3.1.
I'm following the staff report on-
Oh, okay.
14 of 17.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
The zoning analysis.
Thought we did that already.
We can do it on the record.
Okay. I was going to say, so for point one and two of the permitted use in the maximum impervious area, do we agree that those are all satisfied?
Satisfied.
Okay. I'm going to read the tea leaves a little bit here, so point me out if I get ahead of myself. So under 3.8, under permitted structures, the applicant's not proposing any structures with a 50-foot setback. If it's time, if it's the future, the applicant says add additional accessory structures, they need to obtain a land use permit. Do we agree that that's satisfied?
Satisfied.
Yes, satisfied.
Yes.
Vegetative buffer, and this might be one for Catherine. Because we're looking to make a potential condition as a part of relocation of the trail and the site plan, should we say conditionally approved?
You should say we would require, if it's your determination, that we would require that the trail be moved out of the vegetative buffer or otherwise comply with the vegetative buffer. And it would be, make a note that you would want to add that as a condition if you get down to final approval, if that's, if that's your decision.
I think that's been my decision. Is anyone comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we'll add that as a condition. I just want to get the right letter, because we'll get there eventually to have a conversation. That'd be the fifth condition, in theory.
Well, just a clarification, Dan. I don't have any conditions listed, but the first one highlights the fact that the vegetative buffer is, is not in compliance, so-
That'll just be the first one.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarity. Let's jump ahead. Okay, so if we're comfortable with the vegetative buffer and that compliance of the 50-foot setback being adhered to, we'd all agree that that is a satisfied condition? Okay. Okay, 5.2, off-street parking. County's proposing 103 parking spaces, existing parking lot activities on any given day, where not to exceed parking lot capacity. There's no parking planned elsewhere on-site with the exception of some limited ADA access points and parking locations. Are we in agreement that this feels satisfied? Or is there any additional dialogue? Mindy?
Is there any bus parking?
That's a good question for the applicant. I've been out there. I don't remember.
Yeah, no specially designated bus parking, so they'd be in the main lot.
Thank you.
And that last statement, parking locations. So nothing else planned with the exception of some limited ADA access points and parking locations?
That was just my clarification, that if somebody with accessibility challenges comes to the site-
Okay, so it's not beyond that. It's not beyond ADA?
Nothing beyond ADA.
Okay, thank you.
Is my understanding.
So do we need to clarify that and say we want to ensure that?
You could just get rid of "and" parking locations.
Okay, strike that.
With the exception of some limited ADA access points.
Right. I think that would clean it up and not leave open.
And be ready, sure.
5.2.
Okay, if we strike the last three words of that, is anyone comfortable with 5.2?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Under signage, both of these seem pretty straightforward to me, but is there any thing you need to discuss under 5.4?
My understanding is that the signage is not going to be illuminated.
Right.
It's not going to be limited? Is that what you said?
It's not illuminated.
Illuminated, thank you.
Okay, so moving along, I'm going to go with 5.4, being satisfied under both conditions there.
Yes. Yes.
So for 5.7, you'll see that there is a, it states waivers and substitutions, and the comment is that they've got existing landscaping. I, the comment that I put is that there's no proposed changes to the existing natural native vegetation as a part of the submission. The site is heavily wooded and exceeds the ordinance requirements related to percentage of woody vegetation and native plants due to the unique nature of Camp Graylich and the fact that there is no new development proposed. It is recommended that the planning commission waive the requirements related to irrigation and foundation planting. So as you, as you know, in our ordinance, we require irrigation. We've waived it for land conservancy and other type DNR. Recently, we waived it for more natural landscapes and foundation plantings, for example, requiring, you know, like bushes or landscaping around the buildings because they're existing and they've already got the vegetation that exceeds the ordinance requirements. I would recommend a waiver for those.
Agree. I agree.
We're going to put the vegetative buffer on the, on the, the trail, since we're moving it back and we want abandonment of that-
Two-track?
Two-track, especially that for which is in that buffer.
Needs to be planted.
Maybe that's something I'd like to talk with the applicant about, just for clarity purposes. Because as I understood it, the area that you were talking about has historically remained as, it's an access point. It's a two-track. I imagine it was there for some reason. Is there any safety, is there, can you give us some history as far as, like, if that was being imposed by us, would that cause issue with the site accessibility, things like that?
Can't remember, did Metro?
For watercraft and then also as a-
Make sure, we-
Sorry.
Sadly, come on up to the lectern.
We work with Metro more, so.
So sorry, Carrie Ullie. I believe that that was previously used by the scouts as a launch ramp, like they would bring an ATV or something down to launch a watercraft, and then also for emergency access to the north side of the beach, which the north side of the beach we're proposing for fishing and not swimming.
Okay. So if we were going to ask that abandonment take place, would that pose a problem for that area entirely, or?
We'd have to check with Metro Fire and see if they, we'd have to look back in that piece and see if they would really want to have that space used for their purposes.
That seems fair.
I'm fine if we just put 3.8 and then we just have that plan approved, you know, so that-
3.8?
Yeah, the, where we were talking about the vegetative buffer before.
Up above.
Right, so that there's a landscape plan associated with the abandonment as approved by, so that if there is something that Metro says needs to stay, can stay and-
That seems fair. I like that. We'll move back.
So I'm okay with 5.7?
Okay.
If we make that modification?
I am as well.
If you're following where I'm going.
Yes, I think Ann is via Marie on it.
Trying, yeah.
She's dialed.
Good job, Ann.
So there won't be mowing around the buildings or anything like that where there's currently native vegetation and-
Not that I'm-
Going to leave it just kind of natural as it is, all of the buildings?
Like, just-
Yeah, no problem, up and down, up and down.
Could you ask the question again, please?
So with respect to the buildings, you currently have a vegetative buffer around buildings, and a lot of it's native. Are you planning to mow that for access, or is that going to stay natural?
At, like, at the buildings, we'll-
At the buildings?
We'll plan on keeping that.
Pardon?
At the buildings, we'll plan on keeping that.
You will plan on keeping that?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're not going to mow all that down?
We'll mow some, like, sides of the, sides of the road and might mow sides of trails, depending on the trail itself, just, you know, a little bit at the edge. But in terms of the buildings, we want to keep those as natural.
Okay.
Okay. So we're all in agreeance, 5.7 as is is okay. Satisfied? Moving on to 5.13, no proposed changes to lighting. Would say it's satisfied?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, it's not applicable, but yeah.
And then moving into site plan review, completeness review. Applicants shall provide all information listed, and staff has said that all required information has been provided. And there are a few other elements that we're going to consider point by point. The first one is talking about accessibility from the roadways. I think, given the strategy in terms of the private and public use, I feel comfortable that the relationship between the uses and the existing infrastructure seem appropriate. Is there agreeance with that discussion around that?
The only point that I think seeks clarification is it says that access is on Hobbs Highway, and I think it's actually on Scout Camp.
That's correct. I actually got up just to make that, make that comment as well. Actually, got up just to make that, make that comment as well. So it does say in here that there's access to the proposed county park via Hobbs Highway. Hobbs Highway connects to Scout Camp Road, there's probably 30 feet or so that then, that then runs into the Scout Camp Road entrance. So technically, the entrance is off Scout Camp Road.
I think that's in there another place, too, I read. So just changing that language.
Right now, it says there's access to the proposed county park via Hobbs Highway and a limited segment on, on improved Scout Camp Road, so we can.
There's no access from Hobbs Highway, so we'll have to remove that.
Right, I guess what I was meaning was that you have to-
Off of Hobbs Highway.
Off of Hobbs Highway. You can't get to it without, without driving on Hobbs Highway.
I was going to say, access is Hobbs Highway to get to there.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I-
Personally, I-
Strange way to write it.
Just wanted to make sure you were clear on that.
Let me know how to, how to edit it, then.
No, and I, I appreciate it as-is only because I think two things. One, it, it counts it into the equation, but two, in the future, if there is issue, it's something for us to refer back to because we've acknowledged that Hobbs is kind of the, the access to Scout Camp, because-
Why don't you just say to Hobbs Highway, connecting to the limited segment on Camp, Scout Camp Road, connecting to, so.
Making it more clear.
Clear.
So on 6.1, subsection 1, are we all good?
So there wasn't a traffic study done. There's no records of any accidents completed, what, in 22 at that corner. But the accidents typically on Hobbs Highway are north and south of that, where it's-
That's where there, there's damage, north and south.
Yeah, and it's significant.
At that location.
Yeah, but they're going to have to go through north or south Hobbs Highway to get there. And can't we, let me get my number, hold on. I think it's 6.1. I have too many notes already this evening. 6.6 in the ordinance. So it's obviously not going to hit the number of directional trips during the peak hour, understand that. But it says, under determination by planning and zoning or the planning commission, a report is necessary to determine needed road improvements, which the road's not bad now, they do chip seal it every other year, or to determine that it's unsafe or hazardous conditions, not necessarily created by the development, but maybe by the use of the people utilizing the center. And that's where I think kind of the-
That's where the engineer's review came in, and we did have our engineer, have a traffic engineer look at it, and they did not recommend a traffic study.
Right, but we have, as a planning commission, do we not have the right to ask for one? We do.
That is within your purview in the ordinance.
Okay, that's the way I read that, thank you.
Okay, yeah, the, the letter that came back from the traffic engineer said that they, it doesn't meet the threshold-
Right.
-based on the ordinance, and they wouldn't recommend one.
They don't, right.
Right.
But for someone who can see Hobbs Highway, who can hear the cars going through, who's spent there more than 20 years, the traffic has increased significantly, and so have the crashes, and there have been some deadly crashes. That is one tricky road to navigate, even if you know it. So please, I strongly recommend that we request a traffic study.
Would that be a motion?
Well, we can add it in our changes. Right, Claire?
You, so if you require a traffic study, that would need to be conducted prior to revisiting an updated application.
Okay.
Because it would need to be part of the application package.
Okay.
I am no pro at traffic, but I, I am relying on Wade Trapp in this situation.
I guess that's how I feel, too, because they're, that's what they do. I mean, that's why we got their opinion, so I, I feel like I'm not sure why we need to do that.
The, and I, I want to play this out. The, in my opinion, this is, this is tied to the future usage of that property and how that property is going to impact Hobbs, right, overall.
Mm-hmm.
And I know this would be a change prior to this, I remember when we were talking through GORC, the biggest day of the year was when all the kids got picked up and all the kids kind of got dropped off. They had a few events where the parents attended, but it wasn't regular.
Oh, from the Boy Scout camp, you're saying?
From the Boy Scout camp. And their comment, and I can't remember what his name was, but he kind of was, no one knew when camp officially started or ended because it just kind of, there wasn't really a, a big influx, I would say, that folks noticed it. Now, I understand that there was no alcohol involved, there was no regularity of those events happening, which this is a little bit of a change. To me, I just feel like if we're limiting it to this number of people in the events where, I guess, the private events in my head are the ones that may bring pause just because of the perception or the ability for someone to bring alcohol or be over served or whatever you want to call it, even though it's going to be at their own leisure. Having 25 cars in my head, if you've got 50 people there, I frequent many of the parks locally, especially East Bay Township, and believe me, there's a lot more than that that enter out into confusion corners over at Grace McDonald after every single pickleball event that's held there. And like, as, as much as this is not apples-to-apples, to me it kind of is because that parking lot holds way more than 50 cars, and that sucker is full. And that park is banged all week long between baseball and pickleball and tennis. And like, the apples-to-apples comparison between those two and how confusing that intersection is, let alone a blind corner, at least at Hobbs, it's, at Hobbs in that intersection, it's slightly more view shed, in my opinion. I've done it on a sled, I've done it in the car, I've done it side-by-side. It's all kind of the same, but I'm just looking at this as, it's going to be a similar user group. I would bet 90% of the time, 95% of the time, is those that are accessing the park off of Garfield. So in my head, that's, that's kind of like my lived experience in terms of like, how a traffic impact study maybe isn't necessarily for this, because I truly believe that the vast majority of folks are, are going to use this park just like they use Grace McDonald.
The other thing I'll just mention that I've witnessed with other uses permitted by right, when the applicant has met the threshold to conduct a traffic study, we've seen that with Bayview, I think with Brigantine, with Crips and Development. They do the traffic study, and generally, the results of the traffic study are like an additional lane or, you know, ac- access points, pavement improvements. So that was, that was my understanding, kind of the, the rationale behind Wade Trapp's recommendation, is that they don't see a traffic study as coming back with a recommendation to make any changes to the roadway to, you know, in, increase capacity, if that makes sense.
It does. I'm afraid I just still see the other impacts of it, in the way I read the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what they-
I think we should call for-
That's what the planning commission's per review.
Any other thoughts on traffic impact studies?
About one, going with Wade Trapp?
Yep.
Yeah, I think I would, I would tend to go with Wade Trapp, too.
Okay. So we'll say 6.11 is satisfied, moving on to 6.12. This one speaks more to the buildings, that the building structures and entrances there are too proposed to be located upon the premises, are so situated and so designed to minimize adverse effects upon owners and occupants of adjacent properties in the neighborhood. And staff's description of this is talking about the existing buildings, nothing's being I want to kind of clarify this one. This, to me, was the elephant in the room, as was stated earlier.
I think so.
As, as far as, you know, what the proposed uses are and the locations of them, so this might be a good time to kick off this conversation.
Well, and also, it says amplified music will not be permitted at the pavilion. So that's, that's one down, but then my question is, well, okay, we're only talking on private groups, we're talking 50 people, and it seems that that smaller group, I don't see why you would need or would have to have amplified music. I mean, it's a small group, and I'm thinking primarily weddings, and I can't see, I think you do, you could do very well with, should I say, un-amplified music? You could have music, but it doesn't have to be amplified. I mean, as, as we've talked about, I remember a number of people mentioning how nice it was in the evening when they heard Revelry. That's not disturbing, you know, I mean, that's not amplified. And I can't see, or I can't envision why we would need any amplified music in any other program, I mean, whether it be public or private. I grant you, in certain public items, you could need to have a sound system for directions or training or some, something of that nature. But as far as amplified music, I personally don't see where that would really fit in this situation, unless the applicant wants to, give me some reasons why there would be a need for amplified music, amplified sounds.
I guess one thing I would just say is that there have been a couple of instances where folks in the room here weren't talking directly into the microphone, and that was not able to be heard, and that's in a small space.
Yeah, but it wasn't singing.
Wasn't singing, correct.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is that I understand this, when you have an event, especially with kids, you may need to have a sound system to direct them accordingly, and that's fine because that's part of the education process and it's, it's limited. But as opposed to having, you know, an amplified music situation where it's one song after another song after another song, that's where I have to say, I don't see how that could fit into this environment.
What if you had to have an amplified system for directions in that private group?
But he's saying music and you're saying any speaking.
Okay.
He's saying music specifically, and I think there's a big difference there.
Yeah, I think the difference feels like it's, you know, is it chicken dance, you know, going on and on for so long, or somebody's saying, you know, you kids get over here on this group, this group.
Yeah, where you have, where you have a consistency of one amplified music song after another, that, that's where I have to say, I kind of draw the line, because I can't see how that would really add to anything. You could do the same thing with having non-amplified music, you'd have a band there, if I could put it that way.
Or if you've just got a small event and you don't want to hire a band, you might have a small Bluetooth speaker that's sitting off to the side and you've got a little bit of background music going there. That's the kind of thing we're looking for, not the picture with the, the 12 speakers and the beer cans all over the place. It's, it's to have that opportunity for that person who's using the space for their small event. Revelry was a, was amplified, by the way.
Well, I wasn't there, so I, no, I, my revelry days are a long time, but, you know, I'm just saying, it's just that, that, that I can see having music, I can't see having the continuous amplified music that is usually associated with events like a wedding or, you know, a bar mitzvah or something of that nature.
Again, those are going to be a very small portion, I mean, if you look at the, the Venn diagram of what's happening, those kinds of things fit in that, that outside perimeter, that's the smaller piece of what we're doing. Certainly, it's not a, it is a piece, and I'm not going to minimize that, but the fact is, is that it's, it's a smaller piece.
I, I think the concern is that-
I've got a bigger Bluetooth speaker than you've got.
Well, no, not that, I mean, I, you know, I trust that John's emphasis would be on the 99% of outdoor recreation, but what happens if John's no longer there and the county's plan changes? And someone decides that, well, this is a good way to, you know, we can have Bluetooth speakers every day. I think right now, as the plan's written, it could be 120 days a summer of that. Recognizing that you don't want that, John, and I, I know you don't, and I, I think, you know, I don't think most people do, but I think the worry is that that is what is happening daily. And I don't think it will, but, you know, I, I think that's the worry that is expressed by the public and I think some of us as well.
Yeah, you were talking earlier about conditions in the operations and management plan and having those as, as pieces, to your, to the degree that you can possible, that's not the right word, to the degree that you can, by law, and I'd leave that to your council, you know, you have that flexibility to say what you can and cannot allow.
I went down that road with GORC.
You sure did.
As far as I understand, the noise ordinance is the noise ordinance.
Is, John, is this something where, and I, I, I'm kind of trying to articulate your point, Paul, which is, I think there's a level of, of reliability, if it's something that's onsite, that's issued to you to use, that's in a controlled manner. Like, as an example, they had a PEA system that played, what was the name of the song?
Chicken Dance?
No.
Revelry?
Revelry?
Revelry, thank you.
Yes, thank, thank you, thank you.
Not, not, that revelry is taps.
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 There's a big difference between revelry and taps.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I think we're both playing.
But it was, it was something that was a part of the facility, and that's what brings me a little bit of pause, is if, like I said, maybe I have a huge stereo system that I'm going to bring as a part of my amplified music experience, and Rhonda will bring something totally different. And I think that's where, like, I get the idea, the concept of it, but I, I could also see where it could have a negative impact.
Yeah, I mean, regardless of the size and the sound system, you're still bound by the ordinance and our park rules.
Right. Trying to find some kind of medium, because I wouldn't mind if it was all, you know, just folk music, just let it all be natural and non-amplified, but that's probably not the everyday user of the place, just depends.
Well, let me go the other way. Where do you see amplified music being permitted? I, I see it's not allowed in the pavilion. You talk about the fire bowl-
Right.
-is being somewhat protected because of the, its, its construction, so that limits it.
Right.
Where, where do you see where there's amplified, I'm thinking about Bessemer Hall.
Yeah, so Besser Lodge.
Yeah.
The fire bowl, the chapel.
Yeah.
The fire bowl and chapel, as you mentioned, are kind of set in a bowl, so that protects, you know, there's still opportunity for sound leakage, but it protects those spaces, and they're into, into the interior of the property.
But from what we've heard, the, the most projecting location is, is Bessemer Lodge. So, so is it, is it that tough to not allow amplified music from there?
So when you say the most projected location is Besser Lodge, on what basis?
As I said in the presentation, we're talking about a lodge which is now open out towards the lake, up on a hill, so it has the, the, and, and not, I'm not as familiar at all with the topography of your, of your park, but at least- park, but at least what I've seen or parred, it seems like in the locations they talk about, where they would have something in the amphitheater or the fire bowl, or bowl, whatever you call it, that's somewhat limited as to the sound. In the pavilion, you're not going to allow amplified music. This is no.
And the reason for that is that we took a big speaker out there, cranked up to 105 to 110 decibels, and put somebody out in the end of the lagoon, at the end of the, end of the, end of the property, basically, you know, not even all the way across, but the end of the lagoon, cranked it up in Besser Lodge, windows open, windows closed, can you hear anything? We're able to hear from there. We went over to the pavilion, did the same thing. We were able to hear from the pavilion. So that was a learning experience for us, and we said, we don't want that to happen, so we're going to shut that music off from the pavilion. We went and did the same thing in the, in the fire bowl, the same thing in the chapel.
Right. So it seems the major point of contention is in Bessemer Lodge.
The major point of contention was the pavilion, which is why we took it off.
No, 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 no.
Sorry, okay.
Right now. Right now. It seems like from the amplified music, it's in the Bessemer Lodge facility. So could you, is it, is it possible to not allow amplified music in the Bessemer Lodge, period?
Could be a consideration, not what I'm willing to say at this moment.
Well, it's a beginning.
Would you be willing to do a more professional sound study?
We consider that, sure. We can consider that.
Okay.
Is there any infrastructure upgrades to the heating and cooling in that building?
There is no heating and cooling in that building.
That's my point.
It's a three-season building.
Okay. I just wouldn't, I didn't know if there was any long-range capital maintenance plan.
Not planned at the moment.
Okay.
Basically, everything from the, from the yellow gate on at the parking lot, everything from that point on is three-season.
Sorry, John, I didn't mean to speak over you.
My apologies.
So back to the amplified music, amplified sound, I think it kind of ties back to the master plan, and, you know, the preservation of the natural area and the impact that this has to humans, and also our animals. And then secondarily, there's, you know, obviously, the potential for a significant number of events. We don't know what they will be. These are all estimates that you've included. Projection of annual days and such, I really think that we need to take that into consideration as planning commissioners, because that is in the master plan. Mindy? Want to challenge, or? No, okay. But I can just imagine if there were a projected, you know, Besser Lodge had events and daily classrooms, and all these fun activities for kids, absolutely love that, but would hate to hear a loudspeaker on a daily basis, you know, with programming events, or updates on a disc golf tournament, or, you know, different things like that. That would, that would really change the character of this rural park.
Catherine, can I ask you a quick question about this one?
Yes.
Okay. So if we were to place a condition on some type of sound study, noise study, whatever we want to call it, if that was discussed, would that also come down to another condition?
Well, again, as Claire mentioned with the traffic study, I think you'd want to see that information before you made a decision. So if you wanted, the same thing is with the traffic study, if you wanted to request an additional noise study, you would probably want to get that back before you make any final decision.
Sure. Mindy?
Are we allowed to ask for a sound study, or do we just say the condition's not met?
Well, it could be either. But as I, looking at this, we're on number two, which talks about the buildings and structures and entrances proposed are so situated and so designed as to minimize adverse effects. And so, as Claire noted in her comments, there's no plans for new buildings. But, so their, their location is as is, but there are some new activities for these buildings that would have possible adverse effects upon the owners and occupants of adjacent properties, and, you know, what type of design might be used to minimize those adverse effects. But later on, there's also something that talks about, there's a standard that talks about adverse effects, number four. Development and activities emanating therefrom upon adjoining residents shall be minimized by screening, fencing, or walls, or landscaping. So you may want to know the extent of noise that could actually reach the neighbors, that could, and if there's any way to minimize that through design, or through landscaping, or whatever. So if you do decide to go forward with a sound study, I would not make a decision until you get the results of that back.
Thank you for the clarity.
So did I understand you correctly that because there's no changes to the buildings, number two is likely satisfied, it's number four that's in question?
Number two is, you know, proposed locations, situated, and designed, so, yeah, we're not changing the buildings. Now, we are changing what might be happening in the buildings, and so you may want to ask, as someone was mentioning, you know, are you going to change the HVAC or something so that windows could be closed during year-round? You know, if there was air conditioning, maybe you could require that the windows are always kept closed, the sound is kept inside that building. But the answer was, we're not planning to do that, right? So I think on this one, it's going to be hard to find, you know, that they're going to, they're not changing any new buildings, they're not proposing any changes to the buildings. So, you know, you may find that that one's satisfied, but then you get to the heart of the issue on number four.
Fair enough.
So I, I guess one question with the heart of the issue with number four. It states that the, the impact emanating shall be minimized by appropriate screening, fencing, walls, or landscaping. So I guess my question would be, what would the planning commission be able to require to offset that potential adverse impact?
I think possibly some screening, possibly something, but we may need to know what the extent of the noise is before we could get there to figure out whether screening would have, you know, satisfy it, whether, going back to number two, you know, they're loc, the buildings are located or situated or designed so as to minimize adverse effects. Is there a way you could do something, although the buildings are in the same place, something with them that would minimize the sound, which is why the question was about the HVAC, I think.
Mm-hmm, it was. Or being provided by a control party rather than brought in off-site. And that, that to me would be a way to maybe blend the two, or...
Explain that.
Explain that, yeah.
Meaning, I'm uncomfortable with me bringing in a huge sound system and blaring it because, until 7:30. But if the county said, you show up, you want to have amplified music, here's what you get to use.
Yes, you provide it. The county provides the, the...
And then there's, there's a person onsite that's going to come out there and be like, hey, this thing only goes up to seven. I know it says 10, but we only let you go to seven. You know, those types of measures to me is a way to control audible sound. Me having the flexibility to just drag in whatever I want, now we're guessing. That's just me. But I don't know if that's something you guys would consider.
Sure.
And we also don't have anything to kind of base it off of yet, but other than compliance with our noise ordinance.
Are you looking at me? You're going to say something.
Freezing.
Oh, okay.
Can I adjust the temperature?
We lost a lot of our body heat, so.
There aren't any people in here anymore.
Did I, did I read somewhere, and I looked for it, and I don't know where it is, because I've read a lot of stuff. What was the, was, the events are, are they limited to so many? A year, a season, no?
We don't have a specific number of events. Again, I go back to...
I thought I read something.
Yeah, I go back to the public event. We give some estimates, so pages 66 to 69 in your, in our submission.
Okay.
Have some estimates as far as what we thought we might have in terms of participation for, for private events, and then for public events. But we aren't, we can't put a specific number on that, because again, if we say it's 10 public events, I don't want to be the one who has to go to Ms. Kramer's class and tell her that, sir, you're the 11th one.
Yeah.
Wah, wah, wah.
I was thinking more of private. Okay. Partly where I'm at, and I'm just going to say it, is I, I hear all of these things, and I think they're all really good, valid points for us to consider. But my, what's going in the back of my head is how, how many events are really going to take place that are going to play loud amplified music, when you can only have 50 people? I mean, it's, to me, I'm thinking it's a very limited, and here's where it's coming from, personal. I threw a wedding for my son, and I said, 50 people. Yeah, well, it turned into 80, but even at that, it was a daytime wedding, and we had no alcohol, and everybody cleared out after lunch. They didn't even stay for the amplified music. So I guess my thought is, is that how often is this really going to be an issue? I don't know. That's where I'm struggling. I just...
Thank you.
If there's a couple buses of a couple hundred kids from the local school that want to come out for activity, they're going to need a couple of loudspeakers for a couple of hours. That could be every day. That could be multiple rotating days and timeframes in one day. I mean, it just depends on how the activity is. Didn't they have those types of activities before, though? And I imagine they had to use a loudspeaker before, so...
Yeah.
This is, to me, this is something that falls back, if you're talking about those kinds of events, I was really kind of focusing more on the 50 private events, or the 50 or under private events, because those are going to be the ones, I think, that more, would be more apt to have the alcohol and the music. But I just, I'm thinking, okay, well, the large events, you got to have a loudspeaker, because these kids are going to be...
My feeling about the loudspeakers, that those are announcements which go, you know, 30 seconds at a time, 20 seconds at a time, as opposed to a consistent rhythmic noise that keeps on going on and on, and then it's replaced by something else. I mean, sporadic noise, you got to have. I mean, you don't even need anything. 200 kids are going to make all the noise in the world.
Right, but they're daytime events.
But they're daytime events.
I mean, that's where I'm struggling, is they're daytime events. And so, you know, forgive me, I'm not trying to take a side here, I'm just simply saying, how, I mean, how many people that live on a lake can amplify their music and have a party of 50 or less? I mean, it happens. I mean, I know it happens, I've been to some. And so it's just, I'm sitting here saying, why?
Why does it matter during the day?
I didn't say, no. I'm just, I know it matters, but I'm saying, why is it such a concern when it's going to be more of a daytime event? And we're talking about how many hours? We're not talking about...
Who works from home? Anybody here work from home?
A lot of people, I'm sure.
That's...
On a weekend? Probably as much. I would say the majority of people are going to be weekday.
Fourth quarter, first quarter, absolutely, I work. Sundays week in my business. So yes, it does matter, and it can, can be a nuisance, yes. So I think it goes back to, is it...
I just don't think it's going to be a daily thing, and so I'm starting to, this is where I'm struggling.
Business days, the kids could be coming in a bus from, from school, you know? There could be multiple events a day with amplified noise, and it could be more than just a directional, okay, you know, group A goes here, group B goes here, group C goes there. But if they're larger groups, and they're doing an educational piece, they may need amplification to communicate, depending on how large the class is. It may be longer.
This camp has allowed for how many years?
Yeah.
I don't know. That's, I'm struggling with that, guys.
And that whole education piece is one of the, it's the foundation of it all.
I guess, to me, I would think those kind of events, where the busloads of kids coming in, that's what we want to encourage.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. And you can't do without amplified sound.
Well, I mean, I think there's, we need to distinguish maybe between amplified sound and amplified music. I mean, it's different. I mean, it's vastly different. And I think, I mean, a busload of kids coming in to learn something and be out there, I think is really what this is about. And we should encourage, and it's, what the worry is that it's other things happening that are not that going on, and I'm thinking more private, they would be private events.
That's why I was thinking more too.
And, and, they would, you know, again, and it's what Paul was saying, it's rhythmic music constantly going. It's not the, you know, line A, single file over here, go to the next station. I think that's not, at least for me, is that's, I don't think that's a concern.
You could handle all the kids in the world, just hire six nuns.
Put that in your plan.
To your point.
Not a standard for...
To your point, we're thinking the same thing. I'm sorry.
Right.
Catherine, can you... I want us to keep focused on, this is a permitted land use in this district.
Thank you.
Okay? And we have a limited ability under law to attach conditions. We're walking through our standards. You know, we can attach reasonable conditions, but we cannot essentially dictate every parameter of what this land use is going to do, because it's a permitted use.
Right.
It's not a special use, it's not a P U D, it's a permitted use. So, you know, we have some ability to put some reasonable conditions on, whether you distinguish between amplified music and amplified sound. I think the activities of the park, and this is my opinion, would of course involve some type of amplified sound, and I'm sure the camp at some point had some amplified sound. I don't know. But keep in mind, that's what our, that's what we're talking about tonight, is a permitted land use. If that's at all helpful.
So it's not unreasonable that we ask for a sound study, also taking into consideration, and we have not discussed this tonight, and this was discussed at the meeting. I wasn't able to go to the meeting you had just a couple of weeks ago, but the Brownbridge Quiet Area, and how those two properties abut each other, and the impact to the Brownbridge Quiet Area.
Wouldn't there need to be something in the site plan review stating a such noise level decibel to be an adverse thing to justify it?
I think that we already, excuse me, we have a noise ordinance which, whether we like it, we don't like it, it is what it is. It's closely, their park rules kind of follow the same analysis. Now, of course, we can argue whether it's hard to enforce or not, but, you know, the adverse impact on owners, what people are saying is if it doesn't violate our noise ordinance, then we're going to assume it's not adverse effect. I'm not sure we can quite get there. We can discuss that, but, you know, the, the point being if continual rhythmic music day, all day long, you know, for a period of many hours, that, that could be adverse, but does it violate our noise ordinance? So, yeah, we, we have to keep in mind, this is a permitted use, whether we like it or not. And, you know, adverse impacts, I'm, I, well, I, I'll have to understand how the quiet area next door, I mean, I don't know how we quantify how that would be impacted, because it's, no one lives there, people use it, I understand that, but, you know, how often do they use it? How much would they be impacted? I mean, I don't even know what the restrictions are on, on the use of the quiet area. So that's kind of another difficult thing to quantify. But again, we cannot deny a permitted use unless we find these things cannot be satisfied or can't, not satisfied or can't be satisfied with imposition of a reasonable condition. So kind of try and reframe our thought process there, if at all possible.
Catherine, is it, is it reasonable to consider either as a condition, or maybe it's as a future, as a future point of contention? I know that in the past, we talked about them actually providing like a programmatic plan, an operations plan, who's going to run what, and they've done it. plan, an operations plan, who's gonna run what, and they've done that. And that's helpful for us to consider and kind of have feedback from them. Is it, um, is it possible for them to kind of do the same thing from a sound management strategy? Is that something that's?
Yeah, they could, if, if they chose to, submit some type of written narrative or some amendment to their operations plan or something on how they plan to manage sound. And if that would allow you to get through these standards and find that's satisfied, then yes, that could be helpful.
To John's point, they did, and they did it building by building. But I, the one thing that I think that I'm just hung up on is this, what is it and who's monitoring it, if it's gonna happen at all? And that, I don't think we've quite clarified, although you guys quite have that clarified.
So to answer your question, our plan for managing that would be to stay within the construct of the, of the noise ordinance and then have a caretaker on property. If we find that, that anything's happening that's going outside of that, we stop that, we shut that down. And then we continue to monitor this and take steps on a regular basis to say, is there, are there, are there changes that we need to make in our management plan to make sure that we are doing the right things and being a good neighbor? This is not a one-time, oh, well, sorry, this is a, that's, that's what it is. It's we have every intent and every incentive to do the right thing and to not have that impact.
So the noise ordinance, or in, in what is in this plan, on page fourteen of their plan, I still don't know what page it is on our packet. There's two things in here. One is the interesting word of annoy. So the, the noise ordinance says it's some volume that's sufficiently audible to annoy. That's not a measurable quantity, that's very subjective.
Subjective, sure.
Totally agree.
The other thing is E is the use of a loudspeaker has to be permitted by the director. So.
They're gonna sign off.
They're gonna sign off of it, they're gonna know it's gonna be used and they're going to, you know, have the ability to pull that permit very quickly if they need to. So, um, and then, and then D, shouting and other, or I can't even say that word right now, boisterous behavior of unreasonable length and time. So, you know, if something's going on, you know, that's one thing, but if it goes on for a long time, that's another thing. So I am very confident that the noise ordinance is sufficiently restrictive with people on site that if they're getting calls because the neighbors are annoyed, and I'm using the word in the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
They're gonna do something about it because they don't want to be annoyed by the neighbors either. So, um, I, I really think that the reason that, relying on our, on our public safety officers, that's one thing, but that's not what we're relying on here. We're, we have a county park that's saying, we are having people on site, those people are responsible to make sure that this county park is being used as we, the people of Grand Traverse County have desired it to be, and this is our noise ordinance, which matches East Bay townships, and we've got somebody less than twenty minutes away, if they're in the farthest end of the park, that can get there and say, we got a problem, you know? I, I know that, you know, you want to amplify music because you want to play such and such, but we can't use it, you're gonna have to turn it off, apologize, be done with it, it can't be done. I am confident that that is, is what we have to rely on.
That's my two cents.
I mean, we've heard from John on everything that their intent with this park is, and I just don't have any reason to believe they're not gonna do exactly what they say they're gonna do. And if they do, we're gonna hear a complaint and then it will be taken care of. I have confidence that you and your team are gonna take care of that.
Thank you.
What a.
Hold on. I, I mean, I also, I have confidence that John will as well. I just worry that if something changes in the future, what is to say that the next park director or the next Parks and Rec Commission at the county level decides differently? And that's, I mean, again, when we went through this GOREC thing, that's why, at least I was advocating for we have a limited number of events because, you know, I, I think it's not unreasonable to have a little, your, your quietude interrupted by some sound occasionally. But if it's, you know it's limited, with this, the way it's written, it could be unlimited, and I think that's not reasonable.
But I don't think we have the ability to say that.
That's what, that sounds like that's what is, so we wouldn't, yeah, we wouldn't have the ability to put any kind of restrictions.
And whether it's.
You have the ability to ask for those.
Ask.
Sorry. You also have the ability to make the applicant comply with township ordinances, local ordinances, state and federal laws, so they have to follow the health code, you know, the sound ordinance, anything like that, that can help solve the concerns.
I understand that, but I think the concern here is that, I mean, I think as I understand it expressed by the comments we've gotten and the emails, is that enforcement of our noise ordinance might be a lagging, uh, situation. In other words, people would be experiencing distress and annoyance and then it would get enforced eventually. And maybe we don't want to rely on Grand Traverse County Sheriff's Office to, you know, be doing that.
So whether that's me or Kara or somebody else in the future, that ordinance still applies and our park rules still apply.
Mm-hmm.
So we're still bound to, to meeting that obligation.
Right, no, I understand that.
And that is a police power ordinance, so there's no grandfathering into that. So if the township decides in the future to change it for whatever reason, or to have a different enforcement officer enforce that ordinance, that's up to the township and the applicant would still have to comply with that ordinance.
Okay, two things. We need to move forward. Um, I think we all discussed that six point one, subsection two, were the grants that the buildings themselves are not changing, and I think we got to a point where everybody talked through that being satisfied. Am I accurate there?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Me.
And they'll be brought up to health code standards, right? The buildings? Is that what you were saying?
Um.
Buildings aren't changing. No, they're not.
The standard right now is just are they so situated and designed as to minimize adverse effects? So right now, we're not talking about they would have to be brought up to health code, but of course they would have to be brought up to any type of health code requirement that the park needs to for any type of permitting. So although it's not right here that we're talking about that, but yes, they would have to meet any type of, as Nicole just said, you know, state, federal or county regulation.
Because there were concerns about the, the septic and when we went through the previous review.
Yeah, obviously.
I'm sure John's probably already pulled the health department in.
Yeah, we have already. We've talked to environmental health and the health department.
Okay.
Absolutely, we would need to comply with any health requirements.
Okay.
There's no question about that. Those are our own departments, that's not why I want to be in the record eagle.
Sure.
So again, we all agree that number two is okay, satisfied.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to number three then. Uh, it speaks to natural features of the landscapes, we retain as possible, particularly, I think we talked through that with John, I feel confident in it, in saying that number three is satisfied. Conversations, nodding heads, yes.
The only comment I have, as long as it goes back to the vegetative plan for the existing trail.
Which we're gonna include as a condition at the end. Yes. I've got two down so far. We can refer back to. Uh, next up is number four, that any adverse effect of the proposed development activities emitting from there, from, upon adjoining residence or owner shall be minimized by appropriate screen fencing walls or landscaping. Again, I think this was the big sticking point for me, which was this conversation about sound and how to mitigate that. We've talked in circles a little bit. I, again, I think I'm confident in the strategy that's been proposed, which is alignment with our existing ordinance. What brings me pause and may, may, I'd like to maybe recommend as a condition later would just be that any amplified sound be provided by the county themselves rather than be brought in from off-site. Is that too overreaching, Catherine?
No, I think you can, you can, you can ask for voluntary compliance with that. And it may be that, that's a way you feel comfortable enough to find that number four is satisfied.
That's where I'm at. I'd love to just get other people's feedback on it.
I like that idea, especially since it's a three-season building and we know that the windows are gonna be open. I, I would love to see, um, and I don't even know that it's feasible, trees outside each of those windows as a reflective buffer outside those windows. Um, but I like the fact, because you could make sure that that device that's amplifying the sound is at the furthest possible location from the windows, if you will, and monitor how that music is oriented. If you remember, you know, the, the movies downtown used to be face, or the concerts used to be facing one way and they changed them ninety degrees and it changed where the music went. So, um, I think that this is the case here as well, is that we, if the county's in charge of where that amplifier is focused, we can change where it goes, if you will.
I thought about that too. It's, you're right. They, when they changed that down at, um, the open space, it completely changed the projectory of the music and the, where it bounced and.
This would be for private events?
I was thinking our own.
Oh?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think there'd be.
I can get on board with that.
A sound engineer doing a sound study and telling us what the appropriate location would be to minimize.
I don't disagree with that. Because there's a better, I am not a sound engineer. I am not a sound engineer.
Nope, neither am I.
But I know that it bounces off the water, unlike it bounces off windows and/or walls. So I would love to have it a sound, the knowledge, but I don't, yeah, I would love to have the knowledge to make sure that we put, ask, request, that's not the right term, that it's put in the right spot so that it minimizes, it allows for what is needed but doesn't, minimizes what is leaving the building and leaving the property.
So would the, so would the.
What we would need.
Implementation be based off of a approved, um, expert? I don't know what else to say. Subject matter expert's opinion in terms of location and volume and impact.
So if you are going to request that, what I'll ask is for very specific parameters on what you're looking for the results to be.
I kind of thought that was coming.
Specific parameters on what we want tested?
What you want, what, what do you want the results of the test? What are you looking for from a sound test? If we just say, let's go ahead and do a sound test, that doesn't, that doesn't give us any parameters of pass, fail.
Right, we would need the, the expert to help us with that because.
The expert will tell you numbers.
Pardon?
The expert will tell you numbers, but you have to set the parameter as far as what is a pass, what is a fail.
I don't know that we're asking for a pass or a fail. I think we're asking to have information and knowledge to impact the neighbors, the wildlife, the Brown Bridge Quiet Area.
Who's gonna decide that?
Right.
Not me. I mean, I'm no expert in it.
One thing I'll just mention is that, if you'll recall, there was a sound study with GOREC and so, and I don't remember all the details, but I think we want to make sure we think back to what the results of those were and how they helped inform the deliberation and determinations related to GOREC. Because I think there is a lot of ambiguity with the sound study, especially when you don't have the equipment where you're limiting the decibel and the volume. So I think, I think this, I think a sound study is, is powerful and can provide a lot of information, but I would be careful in terms of, you know, making sure that you know exactly what you're looking for and what those results are gonna help inform in terms of conditions or operations or locations of where amplified music can be conducted.
Can we not just go back to the sound study that was done and look at it? Are we not allowed to do that?
No, it's not part of this application.
Yeah. It, it's not part of the record in this application, um, so we really shouldn't consider it.
Okay.
Um, but it would be helpful, as everyone's mentioned, if you want a sound study, you really need to tell the applicant what you're looking for. And it sounds like maybe, and I, I don't want to presume, but if we were to allow amplified sound slash music, we'd want to figure out ways or places we could allow it or the direction it should be oriented so as to minimize impacts. Is that what we're saying? Is that at least part of it?
Yeah, that's part of it.
Okay.
I think there's a couple things at play. I hate to beat this thing to death, but we might as well, we're already here. So to, to me, I, I guess I'm kind of more so putting the ball back in the responsibility of the applicant to control and mitigate that sound if they are providing it. However they do that, it's at their discretion. Maybe they want to go hire a sound engineer and figure it all out, that's at your discretion. My charge would be to you to then be, um, responsible to not want to get those phone calls from angry neighbors and us eventually. That's where my head's at. I, I'm not advocating for the sound study. I've gone through this in other communities with other devices and it's always ended in a, what are you looking for? I haven't really gotten much use out of those at the end of the day. But if there's a responsible party that's at their discretion releasing equipment to the general public to use, they've done some testing, I would presume for the right reasons, to be a responsible neighbor, I guess I would put the ball in their court to manage that as best they can.
And you're referring specifically to Besser?
I'm referring specifically to your property in general.
I will tell you that I'll now use TC Phil as an example. They're not gonna, you want to use anything that we provide.
Right. Well.
Just as an example.
Would they bring, in that example, um.
What are we talking about?
The TC Phil harmonic.
Yeah. And that's just as, just as an example.
Just didn't know what the Phils meant.
Sorry. Yeah, yeah.
I didn't either, Mindy.
Do they, do they amplify?
Yeah. If they're, if they're really doing their thing, then people can go to another venue and experience it in high volume, awesome acoustics, but they could go to your place and experience it al-naturel in the woods, you know? I don't know. Um, I don't know. I'd be, I'd just be much more comfortable if you supplied the equipment rather than somebody else dragging their stuff for their own particular event, but.
My worry with, um, sound study is that you're gonna have competing experts.
We have.
You know, you're gonna have to hire your own, who's independent, who's not, who's working. Exactly.
Looking for.
And there's still the word annoy.
Right.
Exactly.
Well, everybody's level of annoyance is different.
It's totally.
Some people can take a lot, some people can't take any.
So I just feel like they're, it's gonna be in their best interest to control this thing to the best of their ability. I feel like it's met. Let's start debating there. I feel like it's met so long as the county is responsible for providing, this will enter as a condition later if we get that far. So as the county is providing the equipment to minimize. So as the county is providing the equipment to minimize, as it says, any off-site impact from a sound standpoint.
And you would put that on as a condition?
I put that on as a condition. What do you think, Paul?
Uh, boy, yeah. I like the idea. I mean, it seems to me that, that, that you know what, you know what you're going to get. You know what the equipment is. You know what it's capable of. And even that can be modified, but I, I think there's value to it. If they actually ran it, you know exactly what would happen. 7:30 it starts. I think that's fair. As far as the sound study is concerned, the setting of parameters, boy, that, that one, I'm fogged from being a sound engineer, I have no idea whatsoever, but we have a number of consistence, because, people who, elements, you've got the, the people who live around the area, and then you have the Brown Bridge Quiet Area. And, and that, too, could be another issue that you have to be looking at as to how that would be affected and what, what decimal level and, and what sound level and how far it carries, I have no idea. Someone would have to, you know, give me some real direction on that because I have no concept, but...
And there's the wildlife, too. And there are a number of studies, scientific studies, that could be used as a basis for impact if, if we want to go there.
I'm with you, but I mean, again, it's, what constituency are you solving for?
And at what point do you ask for the same from everybody else, all the other properties in the area?
I'm sorry?
At what point do you ask for the same thing from all the other properties in the area?
Well, yeah.
Somebody in their adjacent property who's cranking up the volume.
I understand. You, you're giving me the good for the goose and good for the gander. I understand that. And that's part of the part that I have, I'm wrestling with because...
What I said.
You know, we're holding you to a certain level of, of responsibility and yet somebody else who decides to have a party at their home is going to have a, yeah, I understand.
Right on the waterfront.
I grant you. And I know that one, that it carries.
Absolutely does.
I can, I can hear people on their pontoon a half-mile away from where I live, so. That's on the big East Bay. But I think that's fine.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that, then.
Mindy, I, not to put you on the spot.
We haven't heard from Steve in all night.
I was going to go next.
Off and quiet over there.
He's like, don't put me on the spot.
I...
It's still Labor Day over there.
I'm going back and forth, as you can obviously see. I think because we don't have metrics for a sound, a sound study, what that is, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense because as we saw last time when we had two sound studies, they both had results, but they could both be picked apart by each other's expert, right? I, I do like the amplified sound in Besser Hall being supplied by the county so they know where it is and that kind of thing. With regards to the other areas, that one's a little bit more difficult for me because, you know, they are more in amplitheaters and bowls and are protected by that, but, you know, they can still have adverse effects on the, on the environment. So I really, I really look to where, what the noise level is at the property line. And I think Besser Hall and the pavilion, of course, are the two that are, are the most problem, problematic to, at the property line. But I do like the noise ordinance and that word annoy because that is not, that's not a defined decibel level in any stretch of imagination. So I'm fine with it the way it is, with the note about the amplified sound. And that is both amplified music and voice, right? If that's how we put it in there, I agree with that.
So I'm going to ask a clarifying question. If you're requiring that, if you're thinking about requiring that, that equipment be provided, how does that, how is that handled for someone who walks onto the property with a couple of friends and decides to have a picnic that day and they bring a Bluetooth speaker and set it down between them?
Your park manager's going to be on it. They're very responsive, I've heard, and they'll hear it.
So we go with the noise ordinance and we make sure that we comply with it.
That's why I like this for Besser Hall.
Oh, you want to just, just limit it to Besser Hall?
Oh, yeah.
I'd be okay with that.
That's what I was thinking.
I was thinking about the whole property.
No, I was thinking about this one.
Okay.
That, that, that seems to be the...
Point of contention.
Point of contention.
Yeah, because it's on a hill and it's got some open to the water.
Or be both inside and outside of Besser Lodge. Kind of the, the immediate vicinity.
How big is that deck out front?
There isn't a deck out front. There's two small decks on the side.
How big are they?
16 by 16.
So we say within 25 feet of Besser, the only amplified music is that which is provided by the county?
Can we do that, Catherine? Do we have to ask them to volunteer that?
We'd better if they volunteer to do it because, as mentioned, the noise ordinance controls.
Right.
So whether they're willing to do that or not, we may find out. But otherwise, you know, we're going to do our best to, there was some mention maybe putting trees out there around Besser Hall. I don't know if that's a concern or if there's enough vegetation already. Yeah, we have to be careful on what we do now. If you make a finding that, you know, because of the location of that prop, the lodge, because of where it sits, because of its elevation and proximity to the lake and that type of thing, that, you know, the only way you could find that it would not be adversely impacting the neighbors would be with this type of condition, you know, you'd have to really lay your foundation for why you're adding that condition. And it could still possibly be challenged. If the default is, we're not going to violate the noise ordinance and we're permitted use. You have the extra built, you have the extra, you have the extra built-in protection of their, extra built-in protection of their park rules. So you have the double regulatory scheme. You have the park rules, you have the township ordinance, both of them together.
We got to move forward, people, so.
Yeah.
We've got a few more to go.
So what are we doing?
I'll table that one and see if we can get through that one, see if we have some kind of consensus.
Okay. So number five, we're good to go. There's no ZBA approval needed here. Everyone think that's satisfied?
Yes.
Okay. Number six, that all buildings and structures are accessible to emergency vehicles. I think we talked through that. Five reviews on board. We've included and required them to do ADA accessibility above somewhere. I think we changed the wording. So I feel confident number six is satisfied as well. So erosion control, I think we're cleared there. They've got the...
I don't think we are. We changed that path on the 55th.
I was just going to say, it's the path we were talking about.
Yeah, there's a...
So right.
The condition that we're looking at is requiring that the, the landscape plan with vegetative buffer restored so long as it's approved by Grand Trevor's Metro. If Grand Trevor's Metro does not approve it, then we would revert to the way that the, the two-track is currently configured.
But if they have to change it, don't they have to get an RSC permit?
And they have a permit, but go ahead.
Just a clarifying question with that one. So are you suggesting that, because we did not remove any vegetation. So are you suggesting that we add vegetation to a spot that they're...
That's what we were talking about with the determination of a two-track. If it's something where they say, hey, we don't need this anymore, then typically, yeah, that would be great if you just reseed it and kind of bring it back to whatever it was. But if they come back and say, nope, it's something we need to access the lake, then it stays.
Okay.
Makes sense?
And to be clear, it wouldn't be seeding with grass. It would be native plants because it's a vegetative buffer, so sensitive area.
Right.
So thanks.
Right. Thank you for that clarity. Are we in compliance with, or in compliance? Are we in compliance with number seven?
Yeah.
Okay. Number eight, I think we've adhered to that through our clarity and our future conditions. I feel good about number eight as well. Yes. Moving on, number nine, thank you. And lastly, character after they avoid overcrowding population, less conjecture, yada, yada, yada. I guess I'm in agreeance with number nine as well, just given its overall lead use.
So I think the, the big one to look at with number nine is just the reasonable consideration of the character of the particular area and its suitability for particular uses, which kind of goes back to the discussions that you've had related to noise.
I think both noise, but also like what else this property could be used for. Given its, given its history in terms of what it was, what easements are on it today, the conservancy's efforts, all the efforts tied to the people who are actually pushing the use, I can't think of a better use for the property, to be honest with you. And I think even with the general comments that we heard from 90% of the people who spoke this evening, they all want it to be a park as well. It's just, how do we mitigate these outside factors that may be affiliated with that? So to me, that's why I feel like number nine is met because I think generally everyone is on board with it being some type of public park.
Yeah, I don't think anybody said no.
It goes, I think what Claire, you're kind of saying is, it goes back to the master plan, right? Because it is such a rural area with natural character and such, not to change that.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that the plan for, as proposed, is consistent with the master plan, the use of the land as a public park, consistent with the lake's area. However, I would say just in terms of the, the character and the surround, the immediate surrounding land use and kind of the potential adverse impacts of, of the noise is...
Noise and traffic.
I mean, of all of the standards in our site plan review, that's really what stood out to me.
Okay.
Related to noise, amplified music.
I'm going to say it's outside. What do you guys think? On board?
You guys want to make, are you happy with the narrative that I put in there under number nine?
I liked it. I bet you Catherine could defend us based upon it, too.
Are you?
I bet Catherine could defend us based upon your narrative as well.
Yes, I could.
Yep. It's a good summary.
Why do you have the comment about the parcel is zoned to accommodate up to 196 single-family residences?
Because it speaks to, I think when I'm going through the conditions, it speaks to the zoning and the suitability of...
But the conservation...
Right, but I'm just, I'm just saying, based on, like, the conservation is outside of the township zoning, so our, our zoning allows for up to 196 single-family homes to be on this site.
Okay, but that would never come to fruition because it would have, if they, if heaven forbid, it went back up for sale and somebody bought it, it could be split to three, right?
But yeah, I'm, I'm saying based on the way that, I'm looking at just the township's master plan, the township zoning ordinance and what we allow for in comparison to what this, what this proposal is for.
So she's saying because the standard, the very first thing in nine says that the plan is approved is consistent with the intent and purpose of zoning to promote public health, safety, and welfare. So she's just telling you what your zoning is and then she acknowledges that however there is a conservation.
There is an easement.
Right, so she's making the analysis, it's just suggested analysis for your findings if you choose to find that this is satisfied.
Okay.
Of which I think we're saying it is.
Well, I don't disagree with that's how it's potentially zoned. However, I think with that statement in there, there'll be a lot in the public that are confused by that because the easement does not allow for that. Because there've been comments about that.
It says that. Conservation easement limits the ability for this parcel to be developed. So it clarifies the fact that...
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah. East Bay says this size parcel could do that many homes, but conservation easement trumps that.
Okay. Just saying. There've been comments in the public.
I'm just saying, I think that's really clear. Do you guys think that's clear?
Forget it. I can't finish my statement.
Well, you've finished plenty.
Okay, to keep things moving, I think we were going to table this. Are we in agreement or do we need to? I'm, I'm okay with as it's written or there's other, do we need to take a vote on this one? I mean, are we good with this one being as written? Are there any alterations?
Well, didn't you make an alteration in it again?
Okay, if it has written.
Go into number nine, just for...
Oh, for number nine?
Oh, number nine. I thought we approved it.
Number nine, sorry. Okay.
I know, I'm like, didn't we make an alteration earlier?
Number four.
Number four is the one that we were trying to wordsmith a little bit. So could we add in there, unless Carl's wordsmithing something right now?
My computer died.
Oh, no. Got it. So maybe to wordsmith this one a little bit, I'll start the bidding and just say that the applicant is relying on native vegetation, geographic separation above further proposed park activities from adjacent residences. In addition to, if the applicant is willing to provide onsite sound amplification within the Bessemer Hall and 25 feet thereof by providing their own equipment onsite, we feel that would, that this condition would be met. Ballpark, is that possible?
Don't we have to say at the beginning that we don't find this condition met due to the potential for noise above the township noise ordinance and the park rules?
First.
For what might sound.
First.
You could say it would not be, we cannot find that it's satisfied unless a condition.
Were voluntarily met?
Unless, so, something to the effect that you not find that condition number four is satisfied unless, at all times, the property is operating in compliance with the township noise ordinance, and if the applicant voluntarily agrees to manage, I don't want to say manage, maybe operate, sound amplification equipment in Besser Hall or within 25 feet thereof, if amplified sound is required, or something like that. I mean, yeah, it's not perfect.
Sure.
The point being that, at all times, must operate in compliance with township noise ordinance and their parks rules, right?
All right.
And then, and there could be a finding that the planning commission would find this would be clearly satisfied if.
But we don't know that that's going to be satisfied.
I understand, so.
We're saying that, I think I see what you're saying, we're stating it in here. Forgive my political judgment as a CYA, we're reinforcing what they're already stating. That's how I'm, that's visioning the angle. We're not actually putting a condition in there, we're just stating, this is our rationale behind supporting it.
Right, because I'm not quite sure we can get to that condition.
Right.
If the applicant has testified or provided evidence that he believes they can operate in compliance with the township noise ordinance, which is the same as what anyone else in that zoning district would have to do, because this is a permitted use, remember?
Right.
And/or in compliance with his parks rules, which are part of his operations plan, which he submitted as part of his application, which, and they kind of match each other. Now, you know, if you are concerned that that cannot be achieved, or that will not minimize the adverse impacts, then we're saying that our own noise ordinance is not sufficient, right? So that's concerning.
I'm okay with that. It'd be less wordy than what I said.
You know, you may want to ask if there's any, I don't know what the applicant's position on this at this point, you may want to ask for further discussion, he's up here to say something, I think.
Well, you kind of spoke to what I was, what I was thinking as well, but first, there's a difference between the words of supply and operate. So if we were to voluntarily provide a sound system, providing a sound system, not operating the sound system, so I'm not going to be DJ John.
Right.
Wiki, wiki, wiki.
Right, that makes sense.
Operating the, operating the system, but if you're, if we comply with the noise ordinance.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. Which we will comply with the noise ordinance, and if we find that for some reason we're not complying with the noise ordinance, then we go that step and say, all right, what else do we need to do to make sure we are complying with that noise ordinance and we're not annoying anyone?
And as attorney has said earlier, the noise ordinance is a, is a police power ordinance. We, the township can change it at any point in time, there's no grandfathering protection or nonconforming protection, because it's not a zoning ordinance. So if we do not like our noise ordinance, which sounds like is the case, and you want to build in decibel levels, or, you know, repeat or rhythmic over and over, you know, and further define what's annoying, or further define what's problematic, we can do that, or the township can do that essentially, at any point in time, and it would then apply, because there is no nonconforming protection for a police power ordinance, right? So I mean, that's another thing to keep in mind, if that's one of the hangups that we all have here, is we don't, and we've heard from the citizens that, you know, they feel the noise ordinance is not easily enforceable. I can, I can mention both, probably Nicole and I would not want to take that noise ordinance into court, tell you right now, because it's a little bit amorphous, and we'd have some trouble proving up. We'd have to have testimony from the citizens who are affected and that type of thing. So just keep in mind that we may not like noise ordinance, but that does not mean it couldn't be changed, and then that changed ordinance would still apply to the park, if that's at all helpful.
Keep in mind also, this standard is talking about landscaping, and so a reasonable requirement would be to require landscaping or shrubberies or trees to help mitigate adverse effects on neighboring properties.
So if we, if we said that the applicant's relying on native vegetation geographic separation to buffer the proposed park activities from adjacent residences, additionally, with the offense of their compliance with our existing noise ordinance.
Again, we've had.
That provides additional.
Well, or you could say they may, yes, it goes without saying, they must comply with the noise ordinance, so I don't even think we have to add that as a condition. But, you know, if you want to say they shall provide noise equipment to be used at Besser Hall, or they shall provide the equipment for amplified sound at Besser Hall, or something like that, so you have some type of feeling that what's going to be used at that lodge, or whatever it's called, is something you understand will be provided by them, and they're not going to operate it, we heard that, but if that gives you any comfort, you could ask that they provide the equipment, so at least you know that there is going to be some type of process where somebody who's coming in is going to have, and this is for the use of the lodge, right?
Right.
That they're going to have to get some type of access to that equipment, somebody's going to be monitoring it, somebody's going to hand it out, somebody's going to pick it up. I don't know if that would help you at all. He was writing tiny, tiny words on her paper.
Well, you could, you could have equipment that is limited in volume.
Yeah, what it can do.
Governor.
That's what I was thinking, yeah. You have it set to seven, but it'll go to 11. I do it with my kids all the time. It's 10 o'clock, can we take a quick five-minute recess and then come back and wrap this up? Is anybody else in that boat right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we'll pause our meeting here at 10:01, we'll come back at 10:06, seven-ish, and resume. Thank you.
I, I'm just, you know, that sounds interesting to me, but we're about ready to go back live. And I know our audio is still on.
So we're back to kind of wordsmithing them before, I think that's where we left off. That was the last one. There was comments on, this was a landscaping session, but, or section, but effectively the policies that we're trying to address are in alignment with our zoning codes. So per council, have we got something smithed up that's just about right? Or did I just say it all?
Well, I think that what we're saying is on number four. Those development activities emanating there from, conjoining residents or owners should be minimized by appropriate screening, fencing, walls, or landscaping. There was some discussion on whether or not you wanted to plant additional trees outside of Besser Lodge to minimize, or trees or screen, or some other type of situation to minimize sound spreading or dispersal. I don't know if that's something that's, people are interested in doing, I don't know if it would affect the sound in any, you know, significant way you could do that. But as the draft language prepared by Claire, relying on native vegetation and geographic separation to buffer the proposed park activities from adjacent residences, and shall comply with the noise ordinance at all times.
That would be sufficient.
And no violation of noise ordinance, or something like that. And whether or not you want additional trees or landscaping, that's up to you. I don't know how much landscaping is around the lodge right now, I don't know if adding additional landscaping would be helpful or not. And we've heard how sound, how it's elevated, how sound goes out, will go across the water.
Generally, any points of clarity on that one?
Yeah, there's, there's a pretty significant amount of tree coverage around the area already, but if you go in front of the lodge, facing the water, that's a, to get to the, to get to the windows, you're at least two stories. So by the time you get a tree that's growing up, growing up that tall.
Be a while. Uncomfortable with the language that Catherine threw out. Any other points of clarity, or things we need to discuss on that?
Could you repeat what you said?
Okay, let's see if I can. The applicant is relying on native vegetation and geographic separation to buffer the proposed park activities from adjacent residences, and shall comply at all times with the township's noise ordinance. And then we had the discussion how you could change the noise ordinance if you didn't feel it was adequately strong or enforceable.
I thought we didn't need to say that they have to comply to.
We don't have to, it's only if it makes you, it's more comfort to state it as part of your findings, essentially.
Okay. Doesn't matter to me, I just thought we didn't need to say it.
So through that addition, is the majority comfortable with that? Start there.
Well, let me just ask, in the course of previous conversations, it was brought up that the applicant will reconsider or consider modification to their sound systems or amplified sound systems. Is that something that can be?
I don't think we can mandate that, I think.
I didn't mandate, in the discussion, the applicant indicated, please correct me if I'm wrong, that, that they would be willing to look at and modify their sound systems or amplified music, amplified sound.
Now, if we're able to comply with the ordinance, keep everything on property, not annoy anyone off property, do you still want to suggest that? Or do you want to suggest that as a option, that if we find that that's not the case, then we take additional measures? Help me understand where you're.
I think what, I think what the applicant is saying is they understand that if they fail to comply, an additional, they'd have to undertake additional activities or measures to modify their sound.
We want to be held accountable for that.
You can ask them for voluntary conditions, they don't have to agree to them.
No, I only indicated at the time that it sounded to me like you had at least a degree that you'd be looking at whether or not you would modify the, but if that's not the case, then I withdraw. then I withdraw. But I'm sure, you know, obviously, we're gonna be complying with the, with the sound ordinances, noise ordinances, I should say. But, sorry.
Okay. If we include the language that Catherine just stated with sound ordinances, noise ordinance, thank you, I'll be satisfied to move forward.
Yep.
Yes.
Got a couple.
Yes.
Oh, question.
Go ahead.
Unless I missed it, in all these conditions, none of them talked about the alcohol use on the property.
Right.
Does that mean it's not in the purview of the planning commission to even talk about it?
Great question, Mindy.
I'm looking back at all the standards, um.
There's nothing in there.
Yeah, there's really nothing in here, other than possibly in some type of, looking at number nine, you know, public health, safety, and welfare, um, that type of thing. But otherwise, then yes, I mean, really not. If a permitted land use is allowed to, and I know that there was testimony that the other county parks have alcohol as described, um, I, I think, as it was described, people can bring their own alcohol in and use it for their own purposes, but they're not going to allow anyone to serve alcohol with private events, is that correct? So, that's what they're offering. So, yeah, unless you can find some, one of these standards, um, that would deal with, you're making a finding that alcohol would be problematic, then there is no place in the site plan standards to really discuss that. Now, you may want to look at number nine again to see if there's anything there that would allow you to, um, unless there's another one, I'm just not seeing any of the others. Because nine talks about, is it consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance to promote public health, safety, and welfare? Reduce hazards to life and property? You know, I, I don't know, I don't see any of those as really going that broad, but it's up for you to discuss, I guess. If this was a special use, there'd be more, broader authority for you to look at some of these things, but it's not. Same if it was a P D, I imagine, there's some flexibility there.
Yeah, I don't know how we could tell them not to have it in this park, but they can have it in all their others. How do we have that right? As a township.
East Bay Township doesn't allow.
This isn't an East Bay Township park?
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is not township property, so the township rules don't control.
I understand that.
So.
Can the township make a ruling? Or they still have no, Board of Trustees have no oversight, because it is not their property?
It's not the township's property, they, they can't, they can't make that rule.
Right.
And keep in mind that the county and everybody on that property, all the residents, have to comply with state law.
Mm-hmm. So, the county, um, as I mentioned real briefly, has some level of preemption from local zoning control. So, in this particular case, um, I don't see anything through the site plan standards that can really get you there to say no alcohol, when they allow it in their other parks, their county-owned property elsewhere, their other county parks. I don't really see it unless you can find something in, you know, maybe nine, that you think could lead you to say they could not serve alcohol, but I, I'm not quite seeing it. And that's why the, the narrowness of what you can consider for site plan review really limits your authority, um, and, as I mentioned, in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, it specifically says if the standards are met, you shall approve the site plan, or if it can be met with reasonable conditions. So, that takes away a lot of the discretion, and the idea is that, you know, through your zoning ordinance, you have laid out what are permitted uses and what kind of standards, essentially, bulk, height, setbacks, that type of thing, they have to meet in order to be allowed. So, isn't, isn't a whole analysis of the land use and et cetera, it's just, if you satisfy these standards, um, it should be approved. So, I think that's maybe where you're leading, although I'm not sure.
Seems like that's where we're going.
Yeah, that's where it feels like to me.
So, and it states, um, towards the end of number nine, "To preserve property values and natural resources and to give reasonable consideration to character of a particular area, its peculiar suitability for particular uses, and the general appropriate trend and character of land building and population development." Well, obviously, this isn't population development, but would some of that not, not apply?
I think that might, because, you know, you're talking about, um, the character of the particular area, though we know it's been a camp for years.
Mm-hmm.
You, you said there's residences nearby, you said that there is, um, a natural area or the brown bridge, whatever, quiet area, whatever, nearby. And you're talking about the appropriate trend and character of land building and population development, and I heard a lot of testimony tonight from citizens about their concern about alcohol, um, being used at a park.
Mm-hmm.
However, I still don't think that's gonna allow us to, um, get around a lot of the case law in Michigan, that county, especially buildings, but then sometimes as well, the associated activities with the buildings, um, are preempted to a certain extent, not, not completely, but to an extent, from local zoning. So, I, I have that in the back of my mind as you're talking about this, um, but I do think that last couple sentences you mentioned, um, give you a little broader leeway, but I'm not sure you can get to the point of saying no alcohol. Uh, it's just my personal opinion, but, um, you certainly can discuss it.
Again, I, I go back to, this is a practice that the county has had in play for some time, um, they, I believe they've managed it well, in my experience, and I would hope that it would be the same here. What also brings me a bit of solace to this, in terms of the alcohol usage, was the limitation of private parties, down to 50 people. I think if this was significantly larger, that would have a different connotation, feel, whatever, impact. Um, 50 or less, I, I just don't think it's gonna be that, um, possible. I'm comfortable with it.
But Catherine, that same language could be used to challenge the amplified music, right?
Yes, it could. Um, that depends on, you know, you as a group, what your findings are.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it could be used to do that. Now, I think what's, um, what makes it more complicated here is, again, um, the fact that this is a county-owned facility, the county is not necessarily subject to all the extent of the township zoning, um, and so we're keeping in mind that fact. But yes, I mean, you could, um, decide that would also apply to limit ampli- amplified sound, um, because you're looking at the peculiar suitability for particular uses and the general appropriate trend and character of the land, um, and development, essentially. So, you know, you have a limitation on the development, um.
Mm-hmm.
With the area next door. All that being said, I don't want to presume to tell you what to decide, this is what, you know, what you as a group decide, or the majority of you decide. And again, it's a permitted land use, and if they satisfy the standards, or can satisfy them with reasonable conditions, you should probably approve the site plan.
Again, I'm gonna say that this one's satisfied as is. If there's any additional adjustments that we need to make, let's, let's talk about them. In my mind, I feel like we have enough to kind of hang our hat on, with the exception of maybe adding in a few conditions at the very end.
Attorney S. said, it's been writing down conditions, possible conditions, as we have progressed through the night, so if in fact you get to the point of deciding that's the way you want to go, I'll have her change seats with me and she'll step up and read what she's compiled over the evening.
Sounds good. That'd be helpful.
Jen, can I ask a question? Sorry, you're up and down so much. So, if the private events, the weddings, all of that, aren't really financially necessary, and you've heard both at your meeting a couple, what, 10 days ago or so, where a number of people dressed a packed room, and then here again tonight, is there any thought of maybe just managing this part differently than all of the other parks? So, would it be possible to, and I know you've given a lot of consolations to, you know, and considerations to a lot of things that have been brought forward, but what about, you know, no amplified music or public, or private events, weddings, and, you know, birthday parties, or bachelorette parties, or, or whatever? Is there been any thought maybe just to do that?
I go back to, this is a, this is a much smaller piece, this is the, this is the ancillary part of, of the, of the operations as a whole.
Mm-hmm.
Nothing would make us happier than fill it with all the other stuff first. Fill it with all the educational programming and everything else, before any, anything else even gets an opportunity to, to fit into the gaps. Uh, but if the gaps are available, then make that available, but monitor it and manage it appropriately.
Yeah. To crystal ball, right? We don't know.
The way to solve it for us is to, is to fill the programming. That's what our team's charged with, is being aggressive about finding every opportunity that we can, and working with as many partners as we can, to bring as much educational and recreational opportunities to the property.
Mm-hmm. I was just wondering if that was, ever be a consideration?
Thank you for the question.
Thanks.
Okay, so, back to number nine. Is there any adjustments that we need to make, or are we satisfied with as it is presented?
I'm satisfied.
Good. Yeah, I'm satisfied.
Okay.
I don't think so, I, I'm still.
What are you hung up on yet? Um, it's, uh, the alcohol piece, again, I'm speaking for myself, but the alcohol piece, I kind of feel like is out of our control, in terms of what, what we're being asked.
I get that, so that, um, it's just the resources, natural resources, the land, the property, the preserve the property values and natural resources, give reasonable consideration to the character of a particular area. It just, that doesn't fit with that particular area.
Tied with, uh, tied with the sound.
Sound.
The sound is the issue. Do you feel like if we got into the, um, conditional pieces, we could piece something together with the help of our friends at the other side of the table? For?
I understand we have a police power ordinance, whether we like it or not, and how it's enforceable, you know, all of that, I totally get that, and we can work on that as another rewrite, you know, with some of that language for the future. It just, I'm hung up on it, doesn't fit the character of that area and the impact to the neighbors, the impact to the wildlife, and most importantly, and we, nobody's talking about it, but the impact to Brown Bridge Quiet Area, it's been only mentioned a couple of times. So, I'm still, I am hung up on that.
Sure.
For purposes of it being 10:30, um, I think I've got enough yeas to move this thing ahead to at least call a question, and maybe we get creative. Catherine, do you think that that's appropriate?
Yeah, you do not have to be unanimous in, um, moving forward and, and at all, um, so if you, if you're ready to do that, you can go ahead, um, and somebody can make a motion if you're ready to do so. If not, you can table it, you can continue to.
I think, uh, before we make a motion, if we couldn't have Nicole step up and maybe throw out some options for us to consider?
Mm-hmm. Otherwise, we don't even know what conditions to.
I've got a few, but I know you were taking better notes.
I have, um, just a few conditions. I'll start with the ones that aren't, you know, voluntary, that you guys talked about. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. Um, the first condition that I always put in is that the applicant shall comply with all township ordinances, local codes, state and federal laws. So, that means that it's the, the sound ordinance, the health code, all of that stuff, um, that the applicant has to, uh, comply with. The second condition, um, I just wanted to write down that the planning commission was waiving the irrigation and foundation planting requirements. So, that's that. Then, um, you had the condition to move the trail outside of the 50-foot vegetative strip, um, and applicant shall comply with the 50-foot vegetative strip. With that, the applicant shall have an abandonment plan for the two-track as approved by Metro Fire. I believe that was what was discussed, so.
Yeah, I think it was just based upon, uh, potential abandonment of existing trails within 50-foot setback based upon fire department recommendations?
Okay, that, that.
Fair?
Yep, that's.
Same thing.
You want that too. Um, there's, they are slightly different. Mine makes all of the trail, you have to move the trail, but you can keep the two-track if that's needed by the fire department. Yours is, is a little where the trail could be using that two-track still. So, if you guys want the trail not to use a two-track and be outside of that vegetative strip, um, we can be a little bit more specific in that condition.
I think I was having town, being a little more strict.
Okay. So, you want to move the? Yes. Okay, so move the trail outside of the 50-foot vegetative strip, and applicant shall comply with the 50-foot vegetative buffer, um, and then the applicant shall have, um, an abandonment plan for the two-track as approved by Metro Fire.
If necessary.
Yeah. Yeah, Metro Fire would have to approve that plan. If they don't approve the plan, then the two-track would remain for emergency services.
Okay.
Um, I believe that was the three conditions that I had. Did you have any more for non-voluntary conditions?
I would just say, yeah, actually, I'll pick it up straight on. Okay. I'm sorry, one other thing, just that, um, we talked about the limit, the septic limitation at Besser Lodge, so, um, I think just confirmation from the health department, if this restriction still exists, and if it does, what the plan is for, you know, if there are more than 200 people at Besser Lodge, my understanding is that they would be bringing in porta potties or other, but just have, have a confirmation in writing from the applicant for that.
I remember.
I haven't received any additional information from the health department on, on those requirements.
Wouldn't that be covered under one?
That's what I was thinking.
It would be, because the health department code is a local code, just they would have to comply with. So, anything that the health department would require, they would have to, they would have to go with. So, that means their septic, their wells, all have to be in the proper working order and all of that, so.
I think what Claire's trying to say is that even if it is in working order and it meets the requirements, that it should have capacity.
That's part of the requirements for the septic system, is that it meets capacity for however many people. And if it doesn't meet capacity for.
Okay.
10 or 200 people, then, then other facilities would have to come in, such as porta potties and stuff like that. then other facilities would have to come in, such as porta-potties and stuff like that, so that if you can't overload your septic system when you're having an event, or else you're going to be in violation of the health code.
Claire, are you okay with that?
Okay.
So the voluntary conditions that I have, what I, from, based on the applicant's presentation, 7:30 PM quiet hours begin, all amplified sound shall stop at the beginning of quiet hours. Private events are limited to 50 people, or to less than 50 people, I should say. That's not my mouse. And if you...
If you're less or less than 50?
I think they said 50 or less in their application.
Okay. If it's 50 or less. I also, you had described public events, so I stated, public events will be school events, day camps, family events like Winterfest, educational programming, et cetera. So is that a...
It's defined in here.
Right, I want it to be written down in this document as well, just because if for whatever reason they decide to tweak that and remove a comma or something, I want it here as well. That's all.
Interesting.
Then the other one I have is amplified music will not be permitted at the pavilion, which they also stated. The two that I was not sure about for the voluntary conditions were the alcohol cannot be served at any events, but if a person brings their own alcohol to an event, then that's allowed. And I wasn't sure how to write that. Do you have wording? Do you have that?
Yeah, we've got it in the document. Basically refers to that we can't have a served open bar, served cash bar, or a, I'm trying to think what the other two words were.
13 of your...
Thank you. It's late. Hold on, let me find it.
What I will do is I will type that into the voluntary condition, so that's actually here, what's the draft wording, okay, because that'll be in the voluntary conditions.
Yeah.
The other voluntary condition, thank you. The other voluntary condition that we had talked about but I wasn't sure about was the inside Besser Lodge and within 25 feet thereof, any amplification equipment is provided by the county.
We pulled that out.
We're gonna pull that out, okay.
We talked about pulling it out.
When we said that this is satisfied, we pulled it out.
I just wanted to be sure I wasn't...
Because he never agreed to that.
But he agreed to stick to the order that this is...
He did.
That's all I have for the conditions. Do you have any others you want to discuss?
What do you think, Mandy?
That bus parking is, there's no additional bus parking that's included in the spaces provided in the parking lot. I don't know if that's necessary, but...
That there should be some provided for, or that there is...
There is no additional bus parking. It's included in the 103 parking lots.
So they're just going to take up spots of the 103, yeah.
Do we need to write that down on there? Doesn't seem like we need to. Seems kind of...
They have a designated parking area, and they've, and they're not going beyond that designated, yeah. One thing I would just mention is that the county has indicated that they'd be willing to provide an annual update or report to the township and to the planning commission for the purpose of evaluating operations. So this could be in the form of a presentation to the planning commission. That could be an opportunity to have an annual, at least at the end of the first year, check-in with the county, and I think that that could be a productive...
That'd be great.
...thing to add.
What will that report be measured on?
What?
What would that report be measured on? Number of events? Types of events?
I don't think the planning commission necessarily needs to dictate it, but I think having that...
I was just being curious, no?
I think it would play a part.
I think that would be nice to know, like what the frequency is over the course of the year.
Number of attending.
Types.
Type. Complaints?
That's, can we request that they report all complaints?
I don't know what that looks like. Probably no, I guess.
It'd be nice to know.
You can ask them for an annual report, that part of the annual report would be a summary of complaints over the year and how they were resolved or addressed, okay?
And economic impact. I'm not kidding. That would be awesome. That'd go a long way. Number of visitors, where they come from.
Does this big township subscribe to Placer AI or any of the other services?
No, I think it's, you've seen a little, I don't know why that...
Okay. So what I'm asking her about is a system or a service that does just that, and it aggregates data from cell phones basically without tracking an individual and can tell where people are coming from and how much time they spend in an area and how much money they spend in an area and that sort of thing. So you can tell if someone's, you know, they go to a restaurant, they go to PEGO's. That's the most common place that they go, and here's the average spend at that, so.
We just got to find 40 grand a year for it.
We have some consultants that have done...
If only we had a regional partner that had access to that information. Anyway, back to the conditions.
Does the planning commission have any other conditions?
That feels pretty exhaustive to me, and you go up to nine? Oh.
Or, I'm sorry, protect the four. There's the three that are non-voluntary, and then there is the voluntary condition and that has three, four, five, six, and a sub parts to it that we're going to write down.
Okay. Because you're the keeper of that information at the moment, could you share that with someone that would like to make a motion, so that they may have a look at it?
You're right next to her, Mindy.
Hi.
You knew that was coming, didn't you?
I'll make a motion to approve site plan review nine dash 25 Camp Grayly. Based on the findings of facts that were gone through at this meeting, whatever today's date is.
September 2nd.
September 2nd. And subject to the following conditions. Condition number one, volun... Number one, move the trail outside the 50-foot vegetative strip, and the applicant shall comply with the 50-foot vegetative buffer. The applicant shall have an abandonment plan for the two-track as approved by Metro Fire. A condition number two, the planning commission waives irrigation and foundation planting requirements of section 5.7. Condition number three, the applicant shall comply with all township ordinances, local codes, state and federal laws. Condition number four is a six-part. These are the voluntary conditions from the applicant. A 7:30 PM quiet hours will begin, including all amplified sound shall stop at the beginning of the quiet hour. Private events are limited to 50 people or less. Public events will be school events, day camps, family events like Winterfest, educational programs, et cetera. Section 14 is the alcohol policy within the... There, what is this doc called? What is it? The draft operational manual will be included as that, the whole thing. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Maybe just reference it? Is that okay?
We can reference it, and we'll type it into the document.
Okay.
And then the next, and I don't know what number I'm on anymore, but I think it's four or five, four dash five. Amplified music will not be permitted at the pavilion. The next condition is the county to provide an annual update of operations of the park to the planning commission.
I think because it was approved by the planning commission.
That would probably be...
And in terms of duration, do you want this to happen every year indefinitely?
It says annually.
Annually, okay.
That'd be a nice touch point.
With summary of complaints and how those were addressed or resolved.
Support.
We have a motion by, we have a motion by Mindy, seconded by Steve, for approval of... Now I'm lost.
Site plan review nine...
Site plan review nine dash 25 Camp Grayly. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries, but for clarity purposes, could we just do a roll call, Ian?
Yes, I would like that. Walters?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Edley?
Yes.
Wasson?
No.
Gonzalez?
No.
Ferguson?
Yes.
And Leonard?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you everyone for your consideration and patience. Look forward to working with you and hear more about the project as it develops.
Thank you for your deliberation and hold us accountable. We want that, and we want to continue to be a good partner.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Bringing it back to everyone. We have a second opportunity for public comment. Hopefully, it's something new that pertains to the commission. And feel free to take three minutes.
I will. James Thompson, Scout Camp Row. I'm glad you rubber-stamped this and you hid behind your attorney. Very nice. I love it. You spent all that time on your master plan and on your ordinance, and it was so beautiful, and you've rubber-stamped the John Chase Memorial Event Center. Yes! Nothing is right here. I'll give you one little example. I wonder if, how much of this you even read. He's going to have food trucks. The Boy Scouts didn't have food trucks. You know what? They wouldn't have food trucks when the Boy Scouts had the camp. They didn't even exist. So now he gets to do that. Now he gets to bring in a little loophole. You guys, he's got you bamboozled. Everything's about the private events. What about the public events where he brings in 300 or 400 people and he has alcohol? Hell, he might be DJing it. You never even talked about that. And then one last point, it's a minor one, but you know, we care about it because I have to drive on the damn road. The intersection at Hobbs and Scout Camp is a mess. There are, it's a triangle. And now you're going to have the county park go through that? I've almost gotten nailed twice this summer from people on my own road. These people aren't going to have a clue how to drive on that intersection. And I'm mad because I don't think you did the right thing. I think you hid behind your attorneys, and I think you're afraid.
Declan Andrews, I really think you did, you missed the mark on a lot of things. Rhonda, I want to thank you for your support. You seem to be the only one sitting at this table that gets it. No wedding these days is served their amplified music with a Bluetooth speaker. Professional DJs with professional amplified music speakers are at wedding receptions. I'm annoyed by the thought of that first wedding. So you're, they're out of the gate in violation of our noise ordinance. The minute a DJ, a professional DJ begins playing, they're immediately, in effect, we're holding you accountable, John. Immediately. I want the number to call. You missed the mark.
Marie Biffus, Hobbs Highway. I'm not as angry as everybody else because I'm farthest distance, but what you guys have done is basically turned all of the neighbors into the police. Because now we have to police the county, we have to police each other. We're going to have to be the ones who call. You guys didn't take a look at the traffic studies, you didn't take a look at the noise studies, you didn't do your due diligence, and you hid behind your lawyer because of what's been going on in our general area. What I want to understand is, when they do the violation, how are we going to hold them accountable, and when? Are we going to wait for the annual report? Are you guys going to hear from all of us at regular planning commission meetings? If we're going to come in and go, hey, I had to call these guys three times last month because they were noise ordinance. I could hear them, they were annoying me. And I have a pretty high tolerance for, I mean, teenagers. So what I want to understand is, we're going to be the rules so that we can hold them accountable. I didn't see that talked about at all.
Barbara Winkler, Spider Lake. Thank you for listening. I don't think there's a, my concern is that no matter what you do, you're going to be annoying. Not that you're intentionally annoying, and not that it's even going to be annoying. I'm just concerned that somebody's going to feel, oh, this is my opportunity to say it's annoying. Okay, because that's kind of what I just heard. I think they're trying to do everything they can to make this work. And I think we should give them credit and not be so dang hard on them. He's saying, we're going to be responsible. We're going to, we'll do the right thing. The noise is too loud, we'll change the speakers around, we'll put up barriers, we'll do whatever we need to do to accommodate the neighbors, which they have been doing for five years? Three, five years? Definitely three. And I think y'all ought to give them a chance, see how it works. Don't automatically call when you hear any noise at all, and especially, yeah, kids make noise. There's going to be noise during the day possibly. There will be voices. You will hear them. But you heard them when it was a scout camp before too. So come on, give them a chance. Maybe it's going to work. Maybe it'll be a benefit to our community instead of shutting it down because we haven't had noise there for three years, and I'm used to it now. You know, I just, give them a chance. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. We'll close public camera at round two. Our next meeting date is Tuesday, October 7th at 6:30. And with that, thank you everyone for a long evening, and your patience along the way. Your turn.